I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Kent?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner McLeod?
Here.
Chair Wadi?
Here.
Thank you. Onto item three of our agenda. Any ex parte communications of the commission? Commissioners?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item four on the agenda. This is the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted on by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the commission, and there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the commission or audience requests removal from the consent calendar. We have item 4-1, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes of March 27th. Item 4-2, the planning application 19-026, design review and a conditional use permit for a second story at 1605 Sonoma. And that is it. Does anyone have any concerns with any of the items on the consent calendar? Any members of the public?
Commissioner Jennings noted that the meeting minutes that were posted on the city's website actually don't correspond to the March 27th hearing date, so we'll carry that over to the next commission hearing for action.
Okay, great. So we will just be acting on item 4-2 then?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
With that?
So we'll do the minutes at another meeting then.
Right.
This is March 13th, yeah.
Do you like to make a motion?
I will move to approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second?
Did you ask the audience if anyone would like to pull? Oh, you did. Okay, okay, then.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any dissent? No? Great. Item 4-2, application for design review and conditional use of 1605 Sonoma has been approved. And with that, we will move on. I guess, were there story pulls for that one?
No, because it's the, there's no change in height.
Yeah. Okay. Wonderful. So your item is approved. We'll, oh sure. There is the 14-day appeal period though, so please sit tight for 14 days. We will move on to item five on the agenda. This is public comment. So if there's any member of the public who wishes to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda, please go ahead and come to the public podium here, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Yes, okay, please come on.
Is it right here?
Yes.
I just want to confirm that the site of the claimer in Washington, is that on the agenda?
That's on the agenda.
Is the agenda item number?
It's 6-2.
6-2.
6-2, where do we drop these off at?
Oh, I can take them. Is there anyone else who'd like to, an item for public comment? Great. With that, then, public comment period is closed. We will move on to item six, discussion and possible action on the regular calendar. First up, we have item 6-1, planning application 19-022, design review and parking reduction for a two-level addition at 1115 Nielsen Street.
Yes. Good evening, commission members of the public. Once again, this is planning application 19-022, design review and parking reduction for a second-story addition at 1115 Nielsen Street. Some background on the property. The subject property is a 5,450-square-foot lot within an existing nonconforming, single-family home and two apartment units, built in 1923 and located in the R1 zoning district. The subject parcel slopes up from the front of the property to the rear. Portions of the building are subterranean with respect to the existing grade. The project applicant has indicated to staff that the property has a substantial amount of deferred maintenance. City records show the following work done to the property in the past: an addition garage, some vague alterations in our archives, replacement upstairs, and electrical for a dryer, retaining wall replacement. And here's a snapshot of the original building permit. You can see the two units at the front and the rear unit at the back and the building footprint on the screen. Here's a street view of the property as it sits today. Standards for review. The property use does not determine the applicable development standards. The underlying zoning designation determines the applicable development regulations. The underlying property zoning is R1, and the related development standards for that zoning district apply to the property modification and expansion proposed before you tonight. The standards for review are contained in Section 2024-020A. Staff has reviewed the project scope with compliance with the R1 zoning district in addition to the residential design guidelines. Here's the zoning map showing 11113 Nielsen, and the adjacent property is also zoned R1. And with that in mind, the applicant is seeking design review approval for the two-level addition on unit 1115. That includes two bedrooms, one bathroom, and modifications to the facade of the front two units, and also a parking reduction approval to waive one of the off-street parking spaces triggered with the addition to the back unit. Nonconforming status. The property contains an existing, single-family home with two separate units built in 1923. Construction was lawful at the time of development. The subject property is located in the R1 zoning district, which at most permits a maximum of one main dwelling with one accessory dwelling unit. The presence of one additional unit is legal nonconforming by current standards with respect to project density. And just to keep point, the project density is not to, not proposed to increase with this project scope. Pursuant to Section 2044-030D, additions and enlargements are permitted provided that the use is residential and the degree of existing nonconformity is not proposed to increase. And just the key line in that, that code section right there is that if such structures are used for residential purposes, it may be enlarged or extended. Section 2044-050D allows the reconstruction of existing, of the current project density in an event of a natural disaster. The intent behind this provision is to recognize the existing nonconforming structures with respect to density and to preserve the city's residential unit count. Independent of the proposed project scope, the property owner maintains the property rights to have three units on this site. Under current zoning regulations, a single-family home with two separate units would be classified under the definition of multifamily dwelling, contained in Section 2016-020A3, and would not be permitted in the R1 zoning district if the construction was, if the, if the building was constructed as a new project at present time. The main dwelling unit is proposed to be, is proposed to expand the floor area only. The proposed scope includes an addition of two bedrooms, one bathroom, and a roof deck. The building envelope of the front two units is proposed to remain the same. What this project will do, this project will add two bedrooms, one bathroom, landscaping and bicycle, bicycle parking onsite. It would also create two code-compliant off-street parking spaces with respect to the present code, which currently does not exist. What this project will not do is, this project will not modify the existing street widths. It will not modify traffic flow patterns. It will not alter designations for on-street parking. Street modifications, just as a reminder, are in the purview of the Traffic and Safety Commission and not the Planning and Zoning Commission. Here's an existing elevation of the property today. And here's what's proposed before you tonight. And here's a proposed perspective from the street level. Project scope. With respect to units 1111 and 1113, new open balconies are proposed on top of the existing garages. Interior remodeling of the kitchens and bathrooms are also proposed. The floor areas are proposed to remain at 588 square feet and 587 square feet, respectively. In regard to unit 1115, the project scope includes an addition of 76 square feet of living area to the first floor. Interior modeling to relocate one of the bedrooms to the proposed second story and to accommodate a half, a one-and-a-half bath with an open floor plan on the first floor. In addition, a 673-square-foot second-story addition is proposed on this unit and will include two bedrooms and one bathroom. A second-story deck is proposed off this second-story addition, and on that deck, 108 square feet of the deck is covered with a roof and is therefore counted towards floor area ratio. And then here's just a table showing the existing and proposed square footage for all you three units. Floor area, floor area ratio. The FAR is proposed to increase from 40% to 54%. Garage directions have been taken out, been taken into account for both garages. For the first garage, in average perimeter, in regard to average perimeter height, pursuant to Section 2024-050, floor area ratios, B1C of the Albany Municipal Code, the applicant is seeking to exempt the north garage from FAR calculations. Typical garage deductions are proposed for the second garage pursuant to Section 2024-040 B1B of the Albany Municipal Code, and therefore, both garages have been deducted from the floor area ratio calculations. Courtyard. There is an existing open courtyard that provides that only access to all three residential units onsite. Staff has not counted this area as part of the FAR due to the absence of building mass, which defines the courtyard and provides hierarchy from the building's wall planes as read from the street front. Additionally, Section 2024-050 floor area ratios, for, in regard to single-family residences, this code section, the key point is that it is the intent of the city that all such construction be compatible with neighbor, neighboring residential development. The intent of 2024-050 floor area ratios is, once again, the key point is that it is the intent of the city that all construction be compatible with neighboring residential parcels. Staff has concluded that this continued usage and the landscaping of the courtyard is compatible with the neighboring properties. And here's just a zoom-in floor plan of the courtyard. You'll note the new vegetation and the revised defined entries for all three units, in addition to the bike parking. Exceptional design. This project is subject to exceptional design as it has a greater than a .45 floor area ratio. Exceptional design treatments include cement plaster siding, a gable roof with shingles, skylights, new garage doors, new aluminum-clad windows throughout the addition, open balconies and decks, and landscaping improvements. A landscape plan was submitted to, was submitted to staff illustrating the landscaping improvements to the front yard, courtyard, and rear yards. Improvements include new plants, a wooden deck, and planter boxes, and they're proposed at the rear of the property in addition to pavers and gravel paths and, and trash enclosures. The property, parking. The property has three units onsite. If treated as a multifamily, the parking requirement is one space per unit, resulting in, in off-street, off-street parking requirement of three spaces. Both of the front units fit within the definition of an ADU due to their size being at 587 and 588 square feet. Off-street parking is not required for ADUs pursuant to Government Code Section 65852.2D1. Applying that, interpretation only one, only, the only off-street parking requirement would be for the main dwelling, and that would be a total of two off-street parking spaces. Pursuant to Section 2024-040A2, additions greater than 240 square feet require one additional off-street parking space for the property, which is how staff has applied the parking requirement. Therefore, the applicant is seeking a parking reduction to waive one of the off-street parking spaces. There are two nonconforming off-street parking spaces on the subject site, which are located in the existing garages in the front of the property. The applicant is proposing to increase the depth of both garages to provide two code-compliant off-street parking spaces with regard to the dimensions, and those dimensions are proposed to be nine feet wide by 19 feet in depth. Additionally, bicycle parking is proposed, and a total of three spaces are proposed in the courtyard, as mentioned before. Section 2028-030C3 specifies bicycle parking requirements for keyword "new, commercial, mixed-use, and multifamily" construction. The project scope includes modifications to the existing structures and is not new construction. Additionally, bicycle parking is not a requirement of the residential design review. Correspondence received. Staff has received a substantial amount of correspondences, which was included in, as attachments to the staff reports. There were 50 letters in total that were submitted and included in the commission packet. The project applicant and property owner have also submitted letters to the commission and staff. Two of these letters from the members of the public are in support of the proposed project. Staff has both electronic and hard copies of all correspondences, which are now part of public record. In summary, the correspondences voice concerns with regard to privacy, neighborhood safety, the availability of on-street parking, vehicle speeds on Nielsen Street, child safety in the streets, park, the parking reduction, the proposed building mass, the floor area ratio, and the nonconforming conditions of the property. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA review. And recommendation, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review and approve the proposed project subject to the findings and conditions of approval. And with that, we can answer any questions the commission has. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions of staff?
No questions this time. Thanks. Thorough, thorough staff report. Thank you.
Just one clarification. We're going from two bedrooms in the back unit to three bedrooms. Right?
Correct.
Yeah. So the net change is just one additional bedroom for the entire project. Just want to make that.
Yes, actually, yes, that's correct.
In some of the correspondence, it seemed not entirely clear, but clarify that point.
I had a couple of questions. One is, so I know you mentioned that the current garage spaces are nonconforming. Do, and this may be a question for the applicant as well, but do you know if they're, like, actually usable, or are they so small right now that they are not usable by vehicles?
Our understanding is that they are too small to accommodate a vehicle.
Okay. With respect to the nonconforming use issues, because I know there was a lot of correspondence on that, and thank you for giving that overview in the staff presentation. I'm curious if there are any examples that staff is aware of where a project or a residential development is nonconforming with respect to density and the city has approved expansions that don't increase the density? Do you know if there are, if that's something we have done before?
It's something I could take a look through our archived records to, to determine.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I was curious if we knew offhand if there was any precedent, but...
Yeah. And I can tell you that that particular provision was established as part of the 2004 zoning code update, so it's, if a project were to have come forward, it would have been from 2004 to the present.
Got it. Okay.
I will just also add that we do have, I have processed personally a couple of applications of existing nonconforming duplexes in the R1 zoning district, but because those additions were less than 400 square feet, they were subject to administrative design review. I can't recall them off the top of my head, but they do exist throughout the city.
Okay. Okay. So even if this commission hasn't recently considered an application like that, there have been at least a couple of examples approved at the staff level?
Correct.
Where staff has interpreted the provisions consistent with how you're recommending? Okay. And then just one other question, because again, I know that floor area ratio came up in a lot of the comments we read. I was wondering if you could just go back over what you said about the courtyard area and why staff concluded that that does not count toward floor area ratio?
Yeah, absolutely. So our, our initial read, the courtyard is, as we've pointed out, is in existing condition of the property that provides access to, to those units. Our perspective is sort of twofold. There's, there's a physical absence of mass, even though there are walls which serve each of those three units. It's also open to the sky. It's proposed to be landscaped as part of the project. And so to go to the specific provision of floor area ratio within the zoning code, in looking at that, we wanted to look at the preamble and the intent of FAR as it relates to single-family residences for the R1 zoning district. And the intent is that the construction be compatible. So in looking at that language of the provision of, you know, what constitutes FAR, was our, it was our conclusion that through the intent of what the FAR provisions are intended to provide guidance on, which is, you know, mitigating mass in bulk and promoting neighborhood compatibility, the continued existence of this courtyard does keep within the neighborhood character.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
One question.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I did have one more, if I could just finish. In our, in the, when you sent the staff, the agenda packet to us, I think there was some mention about the Traffic and Safety Commission potentially reviewing conditions on Nielsen Street. Is that, I was just curious if you could speak to that, because it may be of interest.
Sure. Yeah, we, we wanted to address that as part of this, because it's not the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, whose purview is extended to the physical development of the city, to look at speed tables, street widths, use of public right-of-way. That's, that's not what this group does, that's what the Traffic and Safety Commission does. That's very explicit to their purview. And so, simply to add clarity around some conditions of concern to, to the neighborhood, I wanted to make that clear, that this is not the advisory body which, which would evaluate that.
Oh, okay. So, and sorry, maybe I had misunderstood. I, I think I understood that there would be something presented to Traffic and Safety about conditions on Nielsen Street, but I might have just jumped to that.
Not, not as part of this project. Not to go too far into detail on this, but generally speaking, there is a city process for speed humps and looking at speed surveys and curb management, and that's all within the purview of Traffic and Safety.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
I'll wait for the, my question will be for the architect.
Okay. Great. With that, then, we'll turn it over to the applicant, who can give a brief presentation, if you'd like, for up to five minutes.
Esteemed commissioners and city planners, my name is Mark Mira, and I'm representing my family, and I am also one of the tenants who will be residing at 1115 Nielsen Street. I would like to thank you all for the time you have taken to review the project and for the opportunity for me to tell you a little bit about my family, our company, and this property. As Japanese-Americans, my grandparents, Grant and Grace Noda, were both interned, one in Jerome, Arkansas, and the other in Amachi, Colorado. As you can imagine, not only did they experience incredible adversities, but also were stripped of many of their possessions. After returning from internment, my grandpa moved to Berkeley to pursue his doctorate in biochemistry. While attending Cal, he met my grandma, who had recently completed her undergraduate degree and was teaching. In 1964, they purchased the property on Nielsen Street, taking their first major step to rebuild their lives after internment. My grandpa was later offered a position at UC Davis, moving their family away from Berkeley. While in Davis, my grandpa decided to pursue a different career track and started our small family-owned property management company, now known as Noda Family Works. Noda Family Works operated out of Davis, California, is a small, or, excuse me, is a humble, small-scale, owned and run by my parents, sorry, operation owned by my parents, my aunt and uncle, and myself. We, between the five of us, we manage, maintain, and repair all of our properties. I began working for my family right after I graduated from college in 2015, from Cal Poly in San Luis Obispo. In 2017, I moved to Berkeley, where I saw a great opportunity to revitalize and better manage the Nielsen property for the benefit of the neighborhood and as a place for Melis, my fiancee and I, to raise a family. The Nielsen Street property is currently three units and was housing three families for a total of seven to eight people. We do not perceive that this remodel will increase the number of individuals living on the property, nor the amount of cars parked on the street. On February 28, 2019, myself, my fiancee, the project architect, Kirsten Hellman, and the project landscape architect, attended the monthly block meeting to present the project plans and receive input from the neighbors. Individuals from six households attended. I began the meeting by giving a little background on my family history and our intentions of the project, as well as to inform them that Melis and I would be moving into one of the units. After the neighbors were presented with the project plans from Kirsten and Catherine, they were given the opportunity to ask questions and voice their concerns with the project. The concerns raised during the neighborhood meeting were mainly surrounding parking and a few other minor, very minor questions, such as where the garbage bins would be located. I was happy to tell them that the proposed project increases the size of two existing garages onsite, so cars can now fit inside them, an amenity the tenants who previously lived there didn't have. During the meeting, multiple neighbors informed us that the tenants who had been living on the property, Nielsen property, were respectful of the street parking and would, when possible, wouldn't park in front of the other neighbors' houses. During the meeting, no concerns over privacy or the location of the expansion were voiced. Over the years, this property lacked a local property manager, causing many of the repairs to be long overdue. To fix this, I began working on the plans to remodel the property over a year and a half ago, and I, my goal was to revive this unique triplex. With this proposed remodel and myself living on the property, I believe I can better manage and maintain all three units. We believe this modest expansion is the most logical and harmonious way to utilize the existing structure while naturally fitting in with the community character and supporting the city's needs for housing density. Thank you.
Thanks. Do any of the commissioners have any? Yeah, you could go ahead and stay up there, we might have some questions for you.
Well, I was going to ask architectural questions. Direct them to you, or do you have an architect?
She's an architect.
Okay.
Dear commissioners, planning staff, and neighbors, thank you for allowing me to present the project and answer any questions. My name is Kirsten Hellman. I'm the architect for this project. Could you maybe show the rendering? And I also have been an Albany resident for over eight years. I recently had to relocate because my landlords moved back and retired in their home. I'm very familiar with the pleasures of living in Albany. It's a very, it's a wonderful town, and I understand the benefits of living here. I also had, I'm also familiar with the Nielsen Street pretty intimately. I had friends for, that live on Nielsen Street. I've been there in the mornings to jog. I've had, been there for parties. It's a, it's a very pleasant street. It's very narrow, but I've always been very comfortable there. I have worked in, I have 20 years of experience working as an architect in the East Bay. I also have a degree in urban design from UC Berkeley, and I have a very large, a big interest in livable neighborhoods. So that is always kind of at the onset and very important to me during the design process. And I also have done, worked on a project on Nielsen Street in 2008 while I was working for, with Lindy Small Architecture. for, with Lindy Small Architecture, I think, since this is recorded, I don't know if I, I'm not going to mention the address, but it's right, it's just pretty much across the street from this project. So, I like to use my skills to emphasize what is great about living here, and help my clients, as well as the neighborhoods, benefit from that. It's been a real joy to work with Mark and his family, because they have been very willing and very interested in implementing things that are not just beneficial to them, but beneficial to the neighborhood at large, and people that are exposed to their, the project, and to creating, you know, beauty and well-being throughout the design and with this project. So, some of the things that they were willing to do is enlarge the garages, this is not something we were asked to do, it's something that we thought would be, would make a big difference. We're going to add new garage doors, because of the way the house is laid out, the garage doors are very prominent when you're facing the house, it will make a big difference to have them be nice carriage doors. We're adding the balconies, this is something that's also been discussed with planning staff, and we understand that that's something that's recognized as beneficial to create this semi-transparent, semi-public space, that is, and it also really increases the value of the small units that are in the front and facing the street, so there's a buffer between their living space and the, and the streetscape. And then, the new landscaping, which I think nobody, everybody's very happy about that, it'll be drought tolerant, it'll make the location nicer, and it'll be good for the environment. So, I think that overall, this project is a big improvement on many levels, and it'll be positive for everybody around, and I hope you will be, look favorable on our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. I should understand, if you have questions for the property owner or architect?
Just, so, I'm just worried, concerned about the parking, and that the garages aren't usable. And if there's any way we can make them usable, what is the width of the door, the carriage doors?
They're, ah, they're about seven feet, so, yeah.
Very narrow, okay. And inside, it expands out to about eight and a half feet or something?
Yeah. One is eight and a half, one is nine.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, determined by existing walls.
They'll enlarge the garages.
Yeah, in the backyard.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, is it possible to make the garage doors wider, and make enough, well, the problem is you have the legal space inside that has to be retained, but it's too small to put a car. And you're left with an undersized driveway, which means the car's going to stick out into the sidewalk, which makes that unusable, too, technically.
We're, right now, the garages are 16 feet long, so they're, most cars don't fit.
Yeah, you're right. Legally, it's a legal spot, but not a usable spot.
Right, so we're making them longer, we're making them 19 feet, so now...
Oh, did I miss that? Inside, on the interior, you're making it longer, but you still have the width problem, so you can get in, you can...
And nine feet wide, and 19 feet long.
So...
One is eight and a half feet wide, one is nine feet wide, and they're 19 feet long.
The door, is the door opening going to be wider? No.
It's a little tight.
Oh, you're right, here, sorry, I missed that. You're right, excellent, that's exactly what I was trying, hoping you would do, so you did it.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify, are you widening the garages, or just...
We're just lengthening.
Lengthening, okay, thank you.
Well, if I may, it's my understanding that the garages, once they're extended, would meet the legal parking requirement in interior space for a garage, a legal parking space within a garage. So, they will become legal parking spaces, per city standards, so they're not substandard, just like any garage in any other...
I guess it got, yeah, right, but it just goes back to the point, they're going to be legal, but are they going to be usable? So, with the...
Well, usability is a question of the owners or occupants' desire to drive their car in there, I mean...
Well, no, yes, and no, but if it's awkward to get your car in there and use it, you won't use it, and you'll park on the sidewalk, or park on the road, and then you'll lose that spot. For instance, the carriage doors, you're going to get out and unlock those doors, open the doors, drive in, so that's a little bit of a hindrance right there, right? As opposed to an automatic door going up and down.
You know, we can't get the automatic doors to work because of the height.
Right, yeah.
And there's existing floor above, so, I mean, there's tucking under the existing first floor, you know, of the houses.
Is there such a thing as automatic carriage doors? This may be a stupid question, I just...
I don't know, you know, it's possible, but the, yeah, we have to figure that out, how that works with the slope, it's possible, I don't know, I haven't investigated that.
Well, if I may, once they provided a legal space, per city requirements, whether they use it or not, is not up to us.
Yeah, we, there's no way we could mandate someone to use a garage.
Mandate...
Yeah, well, right.
And I, I hope you don't...
Whether it's practical or not, it meets city standards, so...
Well, often, things meet standards, but we give suggestions on how to make things more functional, and that's what we're doing here, is trying to make it more functional.
Well, on that point, is there any room to the, on the sides of the garage doors to, you know, even shave off another six inches, or get, gain an additional six inches or such on the garage doors?
You mean in width?
Yeah.
Probably, yeah.
So, I think there is a really big difference of getting two and eight-foot-wide garage door, at least, even if that's...
I think that's possible, I mean, we talked to the construction engineer, I think it's, that would not be a, probably a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, that would help, anything would help, right.
There, while we have the architect, any other questions of the architect before we open it?
Well, so, those, one more thing, those doors come out, obviously, right?
Yeah, they have to open out, so that you can, yeah.
So, I'm trying to think how it's going to work, you're going to pull onto the sidewalk, get out, un, open the doors, blocking the sidewalk all this time, and then drive in, park it, goes it.
Yeah, but there, yeah, unfortunately, that's the only way how this type of garage, where it's located, works. I mean, they have those type of door right now.
Yeah.
Door open out, the doors open out currently also.
I have a few questions, or? Just looking at the front, there is a roof on the balcony extensions, is that what I'm seeing on the plans, that over the balconies in the front, you have kind of columns at the corners, and a, and a new, new roof?
Yeah, it ties into the existing.
And you're building over the existing garage roof, waterproofing it to create usable, usable open space amenity for each unit. And in fact, that extension is in the non, that is in the setback, so in effect, that extension vertically is non-conforming for the roof, or those columns, I mean, maybe there's some gray area with it not being solid walls, or something, but...
I think, I think you've identified kind of two different issues. The openings don't meet that definition of FAR inclusion, so that's, I'm assuming why the architect left those open. But front porches are actually allowed to encroach into the required front yard setback by up to six feet, so this actually does comply with encroachment table in the code.
Okay. And then, I was, I had a quick question about the bicycle parking, I don't see it on the architectural plan, I saw on the landscape plan. Are those just a couple of U-shaped bike racks? So, it's just nothing, nothing enclosed or protected, just open air?
Yeah, it's something to lock the bicycle to.
Lock your bike to. The only other thing I was thinking of, well, okay, that's it for now, I'm fine.
Any other questions of the architect, or the property owner?
Nope.
Okay, with that, then we will turn it over to the public comment portion of this item. Yeah, so I have a total of nine speaker cards for this item, and so, for those of you in attendance, how this works is, I will call your name, we ask you to line up three at a time at the podium, and you will each be given three minutes to address the commission. So, the first three speakers are Allison Marshall, Dan Marshall, and Jean Safer. Please go ahead and come up to the podium.
I'm Allison Marshall, I live at 1104 Nielsen Street. I've lived there for 14 years, and I've lived in Albany my entire life. I'm asking, well, Nielsen Street is very narrow, so when you have cars parked on the street, there is sometimes no way that, like, if something, someone's driving down the street, you, there's no place to move, pull over, for a car to go by, it's basically a one-lane street, once you have everyone parked on the street. From the corner of our street to where this project is, there are maybe two other houses that have in-law units in the back with residents, even though they're single fam, they're one-bedroom units, everybody in those apartments have two cars apiece. I'm asking that we don't take away a third parking spot for that unit, because as of right now, we could say, maybe they only have one car for someone who lives in there, but you don't know, it could be two cars. If they don't use the driveways, I know that they're changing that, but the driveways right now are unusable, so the residents who lived there before didn't use them at all, they had to park in front of the driveways or down the street. I know that we don't own the spots in front of our house, but everyone would like to park in front of their homes, or, or somewhere near their homes. I have a teenage daughter who drives, I don't want her to have to park around the corner, because there's not enough parking on our street. That's it.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. I would like to ask the commission to not waive the off-street parking requirements also. We could really use an additional off-street parking space on Nielsen Street. As you already know, we've already determined Nielsen is a very narrow street, which requires cars, when they're opposing, for one car to pull to the curb to let the other by. My main concern in this situation is public safety, specifically for fire department access. I've been a firefighter for 30 years, and I can tell you, access and making access down narrow streets is one of our first priorities and hurdles that we have to achieve in the event of a house fire. If we ever have a fire on Nielsen Street, and it's clogged up with cars parked on the side, and you have just one car coming, opposing to the fire engines responding, that's going to hamper their response, slow it down, and they might not even be able to make the block, as we call it. There's been times where I've had to run a block or two in full fire gear, which can weigh up to 100 pounds. I don't want our local fire department to have to do that in the event of a house fire on Nielsen Street. When there's a fire, seconds count. If you're trapped in a home, and your house is on fire, you're going to really hope that your fire department can make access down their street to get to your house. So, again, I'd just like to echo the same request, that you maintain the requirements and uphold parking, we can use as much parking as we can on that street. I'd like the commission and the city to put the citizens' safety first tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi Doug. It's a long time since I've seen Doug Donaldson, I used to be a member of the planning commission. My name is Jean Safer.
Nice to see you.
I was Safer, otherwise pronounced, and I, I live at 1129, I've lived there 45 years, and I've seen it grow in population. I don't own a car anymore, so I ask my next-door neighbor to please park his car in front of my house, so that it looks like there's someone inside, for my safety. And he's doing that, instead of parking in his driveway. But, this design for the, I imagine myself pulling up to the, the doors, you know, pulling into the driveway, opening the doors, and driving in, and then there isn't any space for me to open the door and get out. Or if I park in front of the garage door, make my car outside, I'm the second car there, there's no way, I can't get out on the outside either, because it's blocked off on both sides. I don't know how you get out of a car in a driveway that's less than nine feet wide. I never used my garage, because it was inaccessible. I mean, I had a large, long car, and I parked in the front of the house, you know, the, where there was space on either side from our, our front yards, for me to step out of my car. But I don't see any space there on either side for anybody to step out of their car. Do you understand what I'm saying? I don't know, you climb over into the backseat, and maybe you could get out that way. I wouldn't want to be asked to do that. So, I, I think, you know, it looks fine there, but operationally, I don't think it works. And maybe the architect can explain that. I also want to ask if the chairman would please see that people speaking, speak loud enough, so that everybody can hear, and use the microphone, you know? It's movable.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Call the next speakers? Yeah, the next three speakers are Nancy Gurian, Naomi Rot-Ariaza, and Lisa Van Zantwick. Yeah, they need to go in the order in which they're called, so Naomi was...
Hi there. Am I audible?
Yes.
My name's Nancy Gurian, I actually live, I live at 1112 Nielsen, so I just want to say, I'm personally impacted, because I'm catty-cornered to the new prospective development of the triplex. And I just, again, I'm going to emphasize the need for safety with regard to the cars. I mean, when I listened just before, we were just talking about the functionality of those two garage spaces, and if it's not going to be used, I cannot tell you how seriously it can impact Nielsen. It is one of the narrowest streets in Albany, and if you go down there, there's so many times, when I'm driving down the street, and, and the, and the car that's coming down, it's like a showdown, who is going to move over? And if this, if this current structure that's been talked about, I don't remember when we met in my home, that there was a clear discussion of these balconies, because to me, it looks like an enclosed space. And if, I did ask Mark if there is a potential, possibly, with the, with the, with the enlargement of the extra proposed upper balcony, the upper area, that it's going to be a potential of six people with possibly six cars. And it's just impossible, because I live catty-cornered, to fit six cars on the street. I can't emphasize how dangerous the situation it is, and it's just too congested, and, and so I really want you to really consider that those parking spaces, first of all, go from two to three, at least, because every household on our block, who's a single residency, even if they have renties in the back, they have driveways. So, there is no more than two, or maximum, three additional cars on the street. This is a possibility, if those garages with these carriage doors are not really a functional, if it's not going to be used as a garage, if people are going to not use it, then it's easier to park on the street, I can't imagine six additional cars on the street, so I hope you consider that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, my name is Naomi Rot-Ariaza. I'm one of the people that lives on the backside, on Tevland Street, so around the corner from where this is. My house is directly across, but on the backside. And we, as a community, and I think several people will talk to this, but especially me, because my house is right in front, we have concerns, not only... me because my house is right in front, we have concerns not only about the parking, which we share, but I'm not going to repeat those, but we also have concerns about, about shade, about privacy. If this thing is built the way it's now proposed to be built, whatever windows on the back is going to be able to see into the back of my living room. Not just my yard, but into the back of my living room because of the angle of the way the thing is, is put up. In addition to that, it's going to shade the common area. There's a common area in between the Nielsen Street and the Teveland Street houses that was put in years ago in order to create open space, light, and the ability for plants in the middle, and to create privacy between Nielsen Street and Teveland. And the way this thing is designed with the addition going up the back is going to destroy all of that. So what, what at least I would like to see is if they are going to be, if there is going to be a second-story addition, that it be towards the front, that there not be the bulk looking over the houses that are across the way. And I did want to say to the developer, yes, I know you talk to people on Nielsen Street. You never talked to us. We could have told you that and saved a whole lot of time and trouble. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name's Lisa Van Zantwick, and I too live behind the Nielsen Street, next to Naomi. So we have our houses that are now having these poles up that we noticed, but I, I did want to see, I don't see anywhere in the picture where it shows what that will look like, the rear unit. So I do want to find out where we can see those pictures, because from all of this, we only see the front two. When those are already there, they're adding porches, but nothing has been showing us the renderings for the rear unit, where those windows are facing. So I don't know if tonight, if this is a Q and A where you guys can say, yes, here it is, so we can leave knowing, because the unknowing is worse, because we don't even know what we're kind of arguing against. It could be, so, does anybody get to answer that? Or is this just a monologue that I?
This, just so you know, this is a rendering from the front. So you can see the front part of the addition kind of peaks through there. And then online, there were copies of the architectural plans that had a rear elevation that should show in less of a, in more of a sort of flat perspective of what the proposal would look like.
So we'd like to see, like, this nice rendering where the pictures are, where the railings are, where the, where the sliding glass doors would be. I'm not sure how on a whole second-story unit, none of that is available for us, because it does block all of these lovely trees we planted, the buffer between our street and Nielsen Street. So I think that's a very key element that was missed. Again, speaking to the neighbors on that side was great, but it did leave all of us out of the loop because that construction's budding us now. So, yeah, that's the concern.
Thank you. Call the next three speakers?
Yeah, and bear with me while I pronounce your name. Farazza Nagarvola, Elizabeth Loest, and Vincent Labiano Wabello.
My name is Faroz Nagarvola. I live at 1133 Nielsen Street, so it's about three or four houses up from where this is being built. Over time, I've lived there for maybe 20 years. I've lived in the area since 1961, so we've seen a lot of change. I walk by there all the time. Those driveways are not used to park cars. They are not used now, they probably never will be. Moving eight inches here, six inches there, shaving off a little bit, that's just to meet the requirements of a planning commission. I think we should all be practical. No cars are ever going to be parked there. They're always going to be parked on the street. A lot of people have already spoken about the safety on Nielsen Street, how narrow it is. I've lost an animal there some time ago. I think many people here have lost animals on that street from cars, even though they go very slowly because it is narrow, it's still dangerous. I think, you know, there's a preschool a few houses up from me. Those kids walk down that street to the park all the time. That is, it's a dangerous situation. And technicalities, like, we will do this, we will extend by six inches, we will move this up a few feet, are not what we expect from the city council. What I expect from the council is the safety of its residents. The primary job of any governing agency, whether it be the city, the state, or the nation, is the safety of its residents. We are not safe there because there are too many cars for that narrow street. You've already heard a firefighter say, "It would be extremely dangerous should there be a fire over there." I don't see why we want to go into all these details when it's clearly on the, writing us on the wall that those cars will be on the street and they will be parked on the street that cannot afford any more parking spaces. Therefore, I urge you, please don't go through with these exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. So I'm going to repeat again what my neighbors have been saying so nicely till now. I hope I'll do as well. I don't think so. So, who would be against a remodeling of a building that hasn't been maintained for decades? Not me. But not at all costs. The only thing I want to talk to you tonight, again, is safety, which impacts us all as much as we like it or not. My name is Elizabeth Loest. I live in that old house. So, um, so the, the gray house has just entered the project. Vincent, my husband, and I have an eight-year-old little girl. Her name is Ines. Ines attends Marin Elementary School, located at the Court of Santa Fe and Marin. You might know it. Your kids might have been going there. It means we're very lucky. I mean, we can walk to school. That's one of the reasons why we left San Francisco and came to Albany. It's great school, the fact that we were, you can walk in many places. Every day, Ines, with her friend Madeline, Sam, Natalia, Morgan, and all those kids going to, to that school are crossing, walking on Nielsen Street, going to, to school, coming back from school. And they're encourages at school. Every Wednesday, they tell us, "Please come by bike, come walking. It's good for the planet." Yes, I agree. After school, whenever possible, Ines likes to, like, to playground. And there again, we're really lucky. It's at the corner of the street, Terrace Park. You might know, you might know it. You might walk your, your dog there. You might play tennis there. There's a lot of traffic over there. She likes to meet her friends there. Since recently, Vincent and I have agreed to let her walk to Terrace Park without us as long as she's with a friend. We've also been talking about perhaps letting her walk to school without us, again, with a friend. And she's so proud about it. Everyone tells us, "You have to make your children independent. It's important to give them responsibilities." But having even more cars parked on Nielsen Street worries us. More cars parked on Nielsen Street means less street space, and less street space means more zigzagging, more backing up in order for cars to maneuver around each other. It means increased difficulty to get out of one's driveway, and there's very little visibility when you do it.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker?
My name is Vincent, and I want to talk about a different kind of safety. If we do not like the law, we work to change it, and until we do, we follow the law, especially if you're in charge of creating and enforcing it. When citizens break the law, it's bad enough, but when civic institutions break the law, it degrades civil discourse and fundamentally damages society. I've been to such places, places with weakened rules of law. We don't want to create such a place here. The law says that multifamily dwellings is a non-conforming use in the R1 district. The law says that a building containing a non-conforming use cannot be enlarged. Plain language in the code. We don't, we don't agree with this law, let's change it. Let's go through that cumbersome democratic process. The one thing we never do, should never do, is ignore the law, say it doesn't matter, say it's too annoying to change, say it does not apply, break the law. No one wants to create that world. The staff report already says that it's a non-conforming triplex, but the restriction against enlargement of a building with a non-conforming use, oh, let's just ignore that. Let's just treat it like a single-family dwelling. Nobody will care. Let's start by calculating the FAR to evaluate the bulk as if it though it were a single-family house. And there's a lot of bulk to calculate. All these exemptions over here, all these exemptions are exemptions only for single-family houses. They're not exemptions for multifamily dwellings. The, the, the huge courtyard in the middle, if that's not clearly a usable open space enclosed by three sides, I ask you, I ask you, what is? If you, this was a conforming, if this had a conforming use, the, a, a regular addition would look like that. That makes sense. In fact, this is not, this is not, this is not a, this is not a, a single, a single-family dwelling. It's a multifamily use, and as such, doesn't qualify for any of those exemptions. And the FAR right now is at 61%. That's just clear language in the code. There are other straight-up violations. Those are the straight-up violations of the law. We also question for the findings. The first one is exceptional design, because it's clad in cement plaster and has composite shingles? As an architect, I'm offended. Where's the, where's everything else that speaks about design, especially in this, in that section? When it says that the story was designed to, the story was, the finding says the story was designed to minimize the increase of height and bulk and to reduce her perceived mass from the street and the surrounding yards? Really? Right over here? In the middle of everyone's, in the middle of everyone's backyard? Two-story, 28 feet high? This is just a plain reading of the plain language of the code. Undo hardships. Oh, how hard it must be unless the garages were to be rebuilt along significant, along with significant grading of the site. That's just regular construction.
Thank you. Your time is up. Call the next three speakers?
John Guadala Bean, Barry Camille, and Tanya Noda.
My name is John Guadala Beney. I live at 9, at 1092 Teveland Street. I'm also in the same development as two previous speakers, facing on the back of the proposed development here. I am really troubled by the analysis of the staff in this situation. I think that while there is room for interpretation in regulations, you are required to follow the law. You can't ignore it, and you can't rewrite it. I think Vincent, previous speaker, gave a very accurate description of the problems here, of which there are two main ones. There is the parking issue, and then there is the issue of the privacy, which is related to the floor-area ratio issue. As to parking, I believe that the regulations governing multifamily units require one off-street parking space for each unit. That would be three in this case. There are zero. There have never been any. In all the 35 years that I've lived here, I've never seen a single car parked off the street that belongs to a resident of that property. This property's use would be unlawful unless it had been grandfathered. But being grandfathered doesn't mean that you should be exempted from all other applicable regulations, and I'm concerned that what the staff has done here is to mix together multifamily structure regulations with single-family structure regulations, and that's a problem. The issue of privacy, that has to do with the fact that the proposed development is on the second floor at the back of the unit. Why would it be at the back of the unit? The problem results from the inefficient original design of the structure. That courtyard is usable space that was not used. They should not be rewarded by ignoring that and claim that they are required to build in the back because there's no other place to put it. That usable space in the courtyard should be required to be incorporated in the floor-area ratio, and then the developer, the applicant would no longer be in compliance. Any design that they present to this commission for consideration should be required to include that space. Then they could move their addition toward the front of the building. That's the resolution. You have leverage now. This is an unlawful use of a, of a property if it were constructed today. Please don't just ignore this opportunity. Bring the applicant into compliance for the parking and for the structure itself. It is in great need of refurbishment. I will agree. It's a decrepit building. I passed it now for 35 years. But please, act in the interest of the entire community, not just a group of interested parties.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Excuse me, I had to bring notes. Been a long day for me. My name is Barry Camille, and you met my wonderful wife Nancy Gurian. We lived together at 1112 Nielsen Street. What can I bring to this, maybe to just dehumanize it a little bit, because this is just like one evening in the lives of our commissioners, and I really appreciate all the hard work you do. I believe you don't get compensated in any way for the work that you do, so I really appreciate that. And I particularly appreciate the people on the commission who just raise the issues of practicality, because we can get lost in the numbers and dimensions and all of this, and if something's not going to be utilized, then all of that's for naught. And this evening will be over in an hour or so, but we're going to be living on Nielsen Street for hopefully decades to come with the results of what the commission decides. So I've been an Albany resident for 37 years, 27 of those years with my wife Nancy Gurian at 1112 Nielsen Street, which is across the street and a little bit over from the triplex. And I do have to start off by saying a big concern that I have is safety. And if you haven't been on our street, I, I just want to say, there are only two other streets I know, and I've been all over Albany, probably most of us have, that are as narrow as Nielsen, at least south of Marin, and none of them have the kind of traffic flow that we have, because we're right off Gilman, right near the Berkeley Natural Grocery. We just got a lot of traffic, and we deal with it every day. Most of the people drive way too fast, love to get speed bumps, that's another complication. So most of the time, we're getting traffic from people who do not live on our block. They do not drive safely. They drive way too fast, and it's fairly common occurrence for me. As I think Elizabeth mentioned, I'm coming up nose to nose, and there are a lot of people who drive through our street, and they have no consideration, frankly. They think I'm just going to disappear in my car or something. Often, there's no place for me to place my car. One of us has to back up. It's really inconvenient, and I can tell you, we've lost two or three rear-side view mirrors in the past few years. We've had our car dented up by a car driving unsafely down the street, not just Faroz, but another neighbor, forgive me, who presented here, lost a dog just last week because of a careless driver who just hit their dog and killed it and kept on driving. So that's what we have to deal with on a daily basis. So for us, getting cars off the street is not just a zoning thing, it's not just a number. It's like what we live with every day in terms of safety. We have a lot of young children on our block. That's been addressed. So I really appreciate those who are really talking about practicalities, that unless those spaces are actually usable for vehicles, it's not going to do us any good. My understanding is that...
Your time is up. Thank you.
I'm just going to finish my thought, is that there's some excavation, we were told it's going to have to be done, to make them minimally usable by vehicles. And while they're doing that, and while they're probably going to have to strengthen the foundation for whatever increase in size and bulk of the unit, they should be able to excavate further and make them go far enough and be wide enough to hold at least three code-required vehicles, if not more ideally. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, commissioners, neighbors. My name is Tanya Noda, and I and my family, we have a family business. I am really kind of taken aback when somebody says developers. Like, who's that? In 2002, I came to work for my dad. He was 90, and he was diagnosed with prostate cancer. So the family started planning, and we worked with a lawyer. And because of that, we created, we put the property into an entity called Baynee. So please under- So please understand that we, whereas we create an entity, the sum total of the entity is here in this room, it is our family. So please understand that first. We are not property developers by any estimation. This is our first project. It is a big remodel. We are learning a lot. When we thought to take care of the delinquent maintenance that needed to be done, we reached out to an architect in my, my sister's Quaker meeting, who had been a family friend, and that was Kathy Schwabe. She's from Oakland. Kathy moved to Oregon and interned, we worked with Kristen and we've been very happy working with them. We're not a family who flips property. Dad purchased this in 1964. Angela Moscow lived at 1111 since 1999 and she was a tenant in Davis with us prior, when she was a graduate student and she asked if we might have anything for her. She brought in Paul and Paul moved into 1111 and he, being the youngest tenant, lived there 15 years. So, um, I want to understand, and I understand these are just characterizations that I need to clarify for you. We are not rule breakers, we're not mavericks. We tried to do everything. It was asked of us not to reduce the density in the building because of the shortage of So we took, brought in professionals and we took their direction. And finally, I'd just like you to know that above all, this was meant to be not a project, but a home for Mark and Melissa. And I am so proud of Mark as my nephew and I would hope that you'd welcome him as a neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Call the next speakers? Are there any more? We have two, two more. Zion Lee and Steve Mura.
Good evening. My name is Zion Lee. I am speaking on behalf of my wife and my daughter. My wife and I moved to Albany about 13 years ago and we are thoroughly happy with living in Albany, being such a nice city, very walkable for senior citizen. We live at 1607 Sonoma Avenue, we're just on the east side of, uh, 15, 1605. I'm talking on, um, item 4.2 concerning the second story addition at 1605 Sonoma Avenue. So we are on the, um, east side, the neighbor right next door to 1607. So our neighbor at 1607 proposes to extend their second floor, uh, room for about 12 feet to the back. Okay? Now I and my wife live in the front of our building.
Sir, quickly, are you speaking about the Nielsen project? That's the item we're discussing right now? Or are you referring to this, the Sonoma project?
Sonoma project.
That, that project was already approved on the consent calendar earlier in the meeting?
I can't speak to it?
No, that, that item has been closed. It was already approved earlier in the evening.
Okay, let me just say that, um, my daughter had been in conversation with the clients and they hope they can reach some kind of compromise. Because we don't want to antagonize our neighbor, they're a good neighbor, they're just going to have a new baby. And, um, and I hope, um, my daughter can reach an agreement with them.
Great. Thank you. We need to stay on this, this item right now. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Mura and I just want to speak about, um, what our initial plans were with this property. I've seen this property for 26 years and I know it's a eyesore and, um, and, uh, my initial, um, idea was to make it into a single family home for Mark and Melissa. But because of the, um, uh, housing density rules, we couldn't do that. So, um, now we're here at this, uh, meeting, um, trying to figure out the parking. And it's, um, uh, we just, uh, we want to comply with everybody. We don't want to make the neighbors mad. So, uh, you know, whatever you decide is, uh, is fine with us. I mean, we, we can move on or we could build.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Great. Seeing none, the public comment portion of this item is closed. Turn it back to the commission. Anyone want to?
Oh, I, I guess I could start. Okay. All right. Let's see, we've had a lot of testimony and I want everyone to know also that we received all the letters in the, in the packet. And, uh, I know I've read everything and I think probably the other commissioners have all looked at it too. Also been to the site in my own case, um, multiple times over the past week to take a look at things. I've listened intently to the commentary tonight and a lot of the comments. And, um, I, I, I understand there's so many of the concerns about, are about the safety on the narrowness of Nielsen Street and the safety of cars moving up and down the street. Unfortunately, that's not something that's in our jurisdiction or is it something that this project could directly address in any way? The, the, the straight, street design and the street safety isn't, isn't on, uh, isn't, isn't a part of this project at all. I, uh, very carefully looked at the staff report and have, uh, reviewed their, the staff's interpretation of the regulations. And, um, I, um, I think that the staff has done a very good job in, uh, in, in, in analyzing and assessing the way our regulations apply to this project. Some of the, some of the issues that, uh, were raised by you tonight and also by, by you in your letters include, and I made a little list here of them. Nielsen Street is very narrow in this block and, uh, then it's inappropriate to reduce the parking capacity. I've gotten that, it's a clear message. I would respond to that, that I certainly agree that Nielsen Street is narrow, is very narrow and it is hard to move two-way traffic down the street. As I said, that's something that maybe the Traffic and Safety Commission can address, can look at, I'm not sure. But it's not, uh, not directly applicable to this project. The parking however, is directly applicable to this project. And what, what, what is going to happen if this project is approved is that, is that you're, we're going to get two code compliant parking spaces out of it where we have a lot of testimony saying that even though there's two garages there, they were never used in the past. The building has been occupied in the past, a lot, for a long time. And that means that there have been, the, the people who have lived in that building have been parking on Nielsen Street or nearby. And so I think from a parking standpoint, from my point of view, there's a chance that this will benefit, uh, the neighborhood because it will provide two new off-street parking spaces. I think Chris's concerns about the functionality of those, um, garages are important. And, uh, I'll defer to him on that when he has a chance to talk. But from my point of view, those garages will be wide enough inside and long enough inside to accommodate cars off-street and for people to get in and out of them. Our design review guidelines call for carriage store style doors as a, as a quality of exceptional design. So, so we're the ones that, that kind of, uh, kind of instigate that. Carriage style garage doors on this project will look great. And maybe they aren't as functional as, you know, a door that can be opened with a push button. That might be a consideration that the commission could think about. But from a design review standpoint, I really liked the, I really liked the carriage style garage doors. So that's, uh, parking. The project will illegally enlarge a non-conforming use. There's been some discussion about that and there was a lot of discussion about that in, uh, part of the comments, comments we received. I think that, you know, it's obvious that the, uh, the current layout of this project was built prior to the enactment of any zoning ordinance in Albany. And it's a legal use, it was legal when it was built, it's legal today, it's a legal non-conforming use. And our code, uh, allows legal non-conforming structures used for residential purposes to be expanded. It's clear. The Vincent, uh, quotes Section C, but Section C is not applicable to residential projects. It's Section D of 2044030. That is applicable. This is a residential structure. So it's my belief that, um, uh, that this project is a legal non-conforming use in a residential zone and it can be enlarged, um, as is proposed with the project. So, um, so I think that the staff is findings, the staff's findings are correct on that and I can support them. Then there's the issue, the question about multifamily dwellings in our R1 district. We have a lot of them because a lot of multifamily dwellings were built before the zoning codes, uh, before the zoning map was made. I have, within 500 feet of my house, I have, at one very large apartment building that I know that is in an R1 district. And another, um, complex of small apartment buildings along the BART tracks that, uh, that is legal, non-conforming use, um, in that area. I, uh, my wife and I own a duplex on Cornell. We've, used to live in it and we bought it from our landlord many years ago. It's a duplex on Cornell. It's a, it's a duplex in an R1 district. And that, there are many others, um, in, on that street and in that neighborhood. It's not uncommon in Albany to have legal non-conforming, uh, buildings, residences, um, in the R1 district. And they can be enlarged, uh, according to the zoning code. So I think that, um, uh, the, uh, the, the, oh yes, and then there was some, I'll, I'll skip that. Then there's the FAR calculations. Our FAR calculations are really, are complex, I agree with that. And this, this commission, um, has issues with sometimes with them, how they're done. And when, a lot of people these days are building pretty large homes, so they come right up to the limit and, and we have trouble, you know, making sure that they comply with the, with the FAR rules. So, so we're pretty familiar with them. In this case, I believe that the staff has correctly, uh, in, uh, interpreted the FAR rules. And, uh, and there are some complexities here, especially with the one garage that, uh, that is sort of semi-subterranean there, whether that should be included or not. I, I agree with the staff's findings on that. With respect to the FAR, the courtyard, should that be somehow included in the FAR? It is an unusual, uh, arrangement, there's no question about it. But I, to me, it was clear when I reviewed the code, I went back and reviewed it, uh, just to, just to address that issue, just to verify that issue. And, um, an FAR calculation, they always start with gross square footages. And gross square footages is, this, is covered space, that's real clear in the code, it has to be covered space. That courtyard has never been covered space and it's appropriate, appropriate and proper not to include it in the FAR calculation. And, uh, it, it shouldn't, it isn't being included and it shouldn't be included. So, uh, where do, let's see, there are questions raised about, uh, concerns about the views and the privacy from the residences to the east, the Teveland Street, uh, residential complex there. Uh, I, I've looked at that, I, uh, even went in the backyard of this building, um, and looked through the fences and wanted to get an idea of what's back there. And I looked closely at Google Earth to try to figure out what was going on. And I had staff send me some of the subdivision maps for the Teveland project. We run into this project, this issue, just about every meeting we have. People, people in Albany in the past years have been going up. And there's always a neighbor behind or a neighbor to the side who is worried about, about the pri, potential privacy intrusion. It's just kind of an issue that comes with living in Albany and especially in this era when people want larger homes. And we have many small lots, many very narrow, uh, setbacks, yard setbacks. In this case, um, I'm not very concerned about this and I, I, I hope, and I believe that the concerns of the Teveland Street people are probably, uh, probably, I, I don't, it's not something you should be overwrought about. The project does conform with the backyard requirement. That's mandatory, that's important. And it does meet our backyard requirements. And then on the other side of the fence, the Teveland project has a large open space area that's probably 25 or 30 feet deep. It's well-covered with trees. It's, uh, well, it's well-treed, it's well-prop, it's well, uh, well landscaped, beautifully landscaped, but looks like through the crack in the fence. And, um, so that's going to, um, I, I don't think there'll be a serious impairment from this project onto that private open space. And then the homes that, on Teveland Street are on the other side of that open face. So we have, um, a, a good deal of distance, um, more than 40 feet, probably less than 60 feet, um, between the second story addition at 1115 Nielsen that's proposed and the closest residences on Teveland Street. And frankly, that's a, a larger separation than I've seen in many of the other projects we've been approving in Albany in the past, uh, in the past year, as far as second story additions go. So, uh, I, I, I really support the project. I think it's a, I think it's a really good project. I really like seeing that, uh, we are going, we're going to have someone investing in a dilapidated building, in a dilapidated, um, uh, structures and renovating them. I, uh, I, I don't, I don't think that the impacts on the neighborhood are going to be significant. I, in fact, they may even, they may, it'll probably be an improvement, certainly visually and certainly in terms of the value of the home and the value of the building and the value implicitly, uh, indirectly of the neighbor, of the whole neighborhood. And I think there's a possibility here that, that the parking problems that you see, um, or that, and you perceive are, are, are not going to be any worse and may be better with the addition of those two garages. One other thing I would add, uh, with respect to parking is that, um, we do look at, you know, how busy, how parked up the street is when we're thinking about parking exceptions. To me, that's one of the issues when I have to vote on a parking exception. And, um, I have visited the site a number of times in the past 10, five days. And, um, and I, there, parking has been available, day and night. I've been there day and night and, uh, and, you know, there's some parking, it's not great, it's not ideal, but it's kind of, kind of, kind of average, maybe a little bit below average for Albany. It's nothing like many of the other streets where we do have significant parking, uh, parking congestion. I'm thinking of some blocks of Canes and Stanage, Adams and some of the others, so. So, um, from a design review standpoint, finally and lastly, um, I really like the project, I'm, except I'm, I, the, the massiveness of the, of the, of the decks on the front bothered me a little bit. They're open areas. I would rather see, uh, less, a little narrower pillars, maybe a little bit more modern design up there, more contemporary design. But I understand what the architect is doing, carrying, carrying the ground floor, uh, uh, pattern of vernacular up to the deck. And it works okay and I, I really don't have a problem with it. And, uh, I'm pleased to see a landscape plan. There'll be improvements in landscaping. I'll leave a lot of those comments to Chris, who's a landscape architect. But, um, I, I really, I really think it's a very good project and I support it.
Just a few things to say. Doug said a lot of what I would repeat, but, um, I think starting off with the privacy concerns, I mean, as Doug said, it's a, we live in a tight community, it's hard to build anything without evading someone's privacy and it's always awkward. It's something we just have, they're, they're building within their legal, um, boundary to do so. And I don't think it's impacting the neighbors as much as you may perceive it and not nearly as enough as many other projects have. So that, I don't think it's, um, I don't think it's a legal basis for denying the project could be, basically in Albany, there isn't a legal basis. Could be, basically in Albany, there isn't a legal basis for privacy and view sheds. The parking capacity, we mentioned, Doug hit on the head when he said that. It might, it might actually improve because his current garages aren't used. And actually, I am concerned that in there, even though they're going to be improved, they're still not really that functional. And that's something I want to address at the back as a, in the motion, as an improvement. But let's go to a couple other issues first. The safety can't be borne, the safety of the street can't be borne on this one project. If all these, if there are a lot of cars parked on the street, why aren't those people parking in their garage? Why is it that this place all of a sudden has to hide their cars off the street, and everybody else gets to use the street? I don't see the equity there at all. We're all part of the same community. We all obey the same laws. And there was, there was a statement about following laws, but it seems like we're only applying it to this one, one house, and everybody else gets to violate that. So the safety, there are other streets in Albany that have as big a problem, if not worse. And one is Washington, which I live on, where it's not, it's probably narrower than this, and there isn't enough room for a fire truck to go down. Everybody parks on the sidewalk, parks on the road, so they park on the sidewalk, blocking the sidewalk, forcing people and kids, because it's en route to a school, to walk in the road. That's a huge issue, and we're trying to fight that. So it's not the only street that has these issues. It's a problem. But one of the benefits of it is, because it's a complicated street to drive down, people do drive slower than they would if it wasn't. So you might think they drive slow, but they probably, they drive probably faster than they should. Well, they're not going 40 miles an hour, probably. They're probably going 35 or 25, which seems outrageously fast than it is for that street. But it's not as fast as they would go if there weren't any, if you took the cars off that road, they'd be bombing down there at 50 miles an hour. So it is kind of a traffic calming measure. Now, as far as dogs getting hit, there is a leash law, and it's, I don't know, I can go on, but that's, that's a terrible thing. I had my dog hit. Yes, he ran off leash. He got hit on Washington. So those things happen, and there's no way around that. It's sad. And I really, I am concerned about the kids running in front of the cars, because that's, I think, I think it's one of the number one or number two deaths of tots in America, or US, for kids running up between parked cars and the streets. So it's not, I guess, lost on me. I know it's a big issue. But again, this project can't fix that, and we have to, we had to be equal in how we share this. So back to trying to help. If we can, since there is a lot of construction going on here, and we are digging back, as one of the gentlemen's mentioned, can we also make them a little wider? I know it's not technically required, but it would make, it would add a lot of value to the place if they had two really easy places to park in, and they could always rely on those parking spots. It would cost a little more to construct, but it'll be something that would benefit the project for, you know, 50, 100 years to come.
Sure, I can go. And thank you both for your thoughtful comments. You've, between the two of you, I think, covered almost everything that I wanted to say, so I'm not going to...
You should have spoken first.
No, I'd like you to do it. I agree with everything I heard from this end of the dais. And I, you know, I do, I recognize the safety and parking concerns on Nielsen. When I visited to look at the project with the story pulls up, I had to do the, you know, backup and shimmy thing in my car because it was congested. But for the reasons expressed, I don't think that this project is causing the problems that exist right now. And I don't see evidence that this project is going to exacerbate those problems, and they may, it may actually help make them better. No, this is not a back and forth, sir. This is not a back and forth. So, yeah. To the extent that the community has concerns, and I think a lot of what we heard are legitimate concerns about, you know, emergency vehicle access and that kind of thing, you know, by all means, please pursue those concerns with the Traffic and Safety Commissioner, the City Council. But again, I don't see here the nexus between this project with its expanded garages and a dire increase in parking or safety issues on the street. I did notice, you know, from visiting the site and seeing the story pulls up, I was actually surprised at how minimalist the project looked from the street. So I know we heard some comments about the bulk being concentrated toward the back, but I think that's, you know, often something that we encourage, to try to minimize the bulk at the front of the property. And it really, it appeared rather modest, especially relative to the two houses immediately to the north of this house, which are pretty tall, and, you know, sit at the front of the property lines. It did not appear to me that this was, this project was going to stand out in terms of bulk. And, you know, as Commissioner McLeod kind of narrowed this down in your previous question, what we're really talking about here is an addition of one bedroom. It's not adding a unit. And at the same time, I think it's really crucial that we are preserving what are essentially accessory dwelling units in Albany at a time when, you know, we're seeing lots and lots of projects coming forward with accessory dwelling units trying to add those. And I do think it would be a real shame if the, you know, the applicant, the owner here, was so discouraged by this conversation that they went back to the drawing board and said, you know what, we're just going to knock down the walls and make this all into a single building, which would still have the same bulk and size, but would be removing a couple of units that are, you know, that are likely reasonably affordable for single people or couples or small families. So with all that said, I do, I do support the project. I would encourage the applicant to, and perhaps this, one of the other commissioners had a particular condition in mind around this, but I do want to make sure that those garage spaces are functional and usable, will be used to the extent possible. But I don't think we can mandate that. We don't, we don't have parking police that, you know, go around and make people park in their garages. But designing for maximum functionality, I think, is important here in particular. And I also would encourage, I recognize that this is not the kind of project that triggers bike parking requirements. And so appreciate that the applicant is voluntarily providing bike parking in the courtyard. I would like to see those actually be lockable and covered bike parking spaces, which is something that we would typically consider or require for a multifamily project that is seeking a parking reduction. And so, you know, I think that is something that can also help mitigate, making it more attractive for people to bike more regularly, helps mitigate some of the concern about the number of parking spaces. So I, you know, I would be in favor of actually drafting a condition to that effect if there was support from other commissioners.
Yes, I agree with my colleagues, appreciate their thoughtful comments. And I would like to also say that I appreciate staff's efforts on this project. It's been a lot of background work. I agree with the findings of staff versus concerning the non-conforming use and expansion. Looking at the project in terms of its size and impact on the site, I see it as a rather relatively modest second-story addition. It's within the setbacks. It's 20 feet from the rear yard. It doesn't impose any burden, or it doesn't encroach anywhere towards the back at all from the front. It's relatively invisible due to sightlines from the street, from your perspective down below. It's no taller than the house next door. Maybe it's even a little shorter than the house next door. So the idea that it's massive and bulky, to me, it just doesn't, doesn't, I just don't agree with that. The other things, the parking reduction, I do appreciate the applicant's efforts to enlarge the two garages, make them legal spaces. We can't mandate that they make them bigger than that. I think the idea of excavating further under the house, another 20 feet, 19, 20 feet, would be excessively expensive, excessive amount of dirt moving, and to really no great effect, because I don't think it would be practically used to have a tandem spot way in the back of a garage like that. I do appreciate the fact that there will be two legal spaces, covered spaces, going from zero, I think, is a big improvement. The other point I'd like to make is that, in terms of design review, I'd like to follow up a little bit on Doug's comments. I don't really like the way the balconies are treated. I don't like the columns in the front. To me, it kind of makes the house project further forward at the front in a way that I just don't really appreciate. I think that should be some sort of lighter treatment. In fact, I would suggest taking away the corner columns and taking the way, the roofs over those two balconies, treating the railing much more like the upper railing, and then putting awnings over the doors to the outside there. I think that would look a little, little more elegant. Balconies would be equally as usable. I think it would be a little less overhead visual stuff looking at it. You know, it's just more stucco right there. And finally, as a summary, I think it's great to have a variety of living situations, rental situations. This project's going to be, I would say, a vast improvement for the neighborhood, renovating and upgrading all the units. I think it would be beneficial to the city and to the neighborhood. So I support it as well.
Great, thanks. Well, before I go into my comments, I just actually did have a question for staff. On the garages in the front, are those within the buildable area? Is there any, would there be any issue with widening those structures or changing widths?
Yeah, you could require that as a condition.
Okay. So where I was going with this is, you know, again, I very much reiterate much of what my fellow commissioners have said. And I think, to me, really, this project does boil down to, it's the addition of one bedroom. There is more than that amount of square footage being added by creating a larger, more usable sort of open floor plan, living and dining room. But really, the, what we're talking about in terms of a pragmatic, programmatic change is we're adding one bedroom to this triplex in total. And we're adding one bedroom to a triplex that currently has effectively zero off-street parking. And we're creating, there's the requirement for one spot, and they're effectively creating two. I know that's not technically what we're dealing with here, but I think, again, as some folks have mentioned, in terms of having a pragmatic look at this, I think pragmatically, that is what we're talking about. There's a requirement for one, and the project is creating two. I put a little asterisk next to the two, because I do think there are some changes that could be made to the two parking spots that are being provided to really make them usable, so that people will use them. And I think there are the types of changes that, under our standard for exceptional design here and looking at the totality of the project, could make the project a better project overall. And I do actually agree very much with some of the comments Commissioner McLeod mentioned about the balconies in the front. So focusing on the parking, some of the thoughts that I had that I think would, would make this a bit more of sort of a win-win for some of the concerns the community has and still moving forward with the project, would be to see if we could widen the garages. I imagine the garages will need to be reinforced anyhow in a fair amount of work in order for them to hold the load of functioning as a deck effectively. If those garages could widen to be either in alignment with the sort of the wings of the two units or just shy of that, I think there would be room to probably get a garage door that's in the range of nine, nine to 10 feet wide if the sidewalls were to expand. And I think as soon as you start talking about a garage door of about nine feet wide, that starts being very pragmatic and very usable. I also think those side retaining walls, each of those garages each have two retaining walls. And from at least an initial look, it looks like those retaining walls, there's no reason that those could be, could not be pushed out an additional few feet as well. On the inbound side towards the entry stairs, it looks like the retaining walls could get pushed up to the walkway width. And then similarly, on the outbound sides of the property, you know, to the property line. And I think that, in concert with widening the garage doors, would both give a realistic width of a garage that you could access, and it'd also give a realistic width of being able to pull into the driveway and have a little maneuvering space. I do certainly know that there are automatic outswing garage carriage doors, so I think that could certainly be a condition of approval. I do think that, again, is a very pragmatic issue. No one's going to pull into a shadow driveway. You're going to have to be far enough back. You need to open your car door to unlock it. I think all of those are very real comments, but I also think they're very solvable. And I think with just a couple minor conditions of approval, of requesting the applicant to look at widening the width of the garage door, and, you know, as a result, widening, or widening the structure, widening the garage door, pushing out those retaining walls, and then making the changes to the deck, I think, from the aesthetic perspective, that that, in concert, really does, in my opinion, almost result in a net increase of one parking spot at this property over what we're talking about today. As it relates, so those are sort of my comments as it relates to the parking. As it relates to the addition, I similarly don't really have any concerns. Looking at this, this property, I do, I feel like this property is a bit of a transition to the two neighbors to the north, and then some of the smaller buildings to the south. And I think right now, the way the garages are one-story at the front, it goes up to the two-story sort of main building, and then with this addition being a bit more of that addition setback, it kind of plays nicely with the, you know, the smaller buildings on one side and the larger to the other. And I think that transition really works. The one suggestion that I would have to, again, sort of hear those neighbors to the rear, it is always a little disheartening coming to these hearings when you hear neighbors not being happy with one another. So often, we've had hearings where everyone has come to the hearing and are supportive of each other, that I think anything we can do to sort of have the neighborhood feel like there was a bit of a win-win or not a total, you know, loss on one side is great. And I do think, on the rear facade of the addition, it looks like right now there are sort of traditional height casement windows on the back. And those are both bedrooms, bedrooms and bathrooms, it looks like, on the floor plan. I don't see any reason why those couldn't be swapped out for transom windows. Transom windows are ones that are just sort of at, you know, ceiling height, so they're not at eye height. So you get light into the bedrooms, but you don't have that sort of peering down feeling that I could imagine the neighbors on the backyard. Again, I'm not totally convinced you'll actually be able to see all the way over, but it seems like it wouldn't be much of a loss for the project to be able to have perhaps transom windows on that rear facade rather than a, you know, a larger casement window. And that may really squelch some of the concerns from a privacy perspective of the neighbors who sit to their, who live to the rear. So all in all, those are my thoughts on the project. And I would be supportive of moving it forward with conditions in some sort of package along those lines, if other commissioners were as well.
How do we do that if it's not technically not required, but we want to just add that?
Well, maybe I'll ask this. If I could ask the property owner, the applicant, to come up for a second, we could maybe talk about... I do think we have the ability, or to the, I do think we have the ability through the exceptional design standard to ask for massing modifications to the project, which to me, that is what we're asking for. But we might as well ask if the property owner would be willing to make those changes. So, and I don't know if you all had any that I didn't reiterate.
Well, I just wanted to finesse a little bit what you said. So looking at the two retaining walls that enclose the driveway, we're talking about if you could widen those out and widen the garage out a little bit.
Right.
And it looks like if you widen to the south or the north, you hit steps. So maybe you need to widen to the interior, but that's a bigger wall. Also, they've got to rebuild all the steps. Maybe the best steps are easy to rebuild. I'm not quite sure. So whether than locking you into how to widen that, can we, can we ask you to accept like a 10-foot wide? Yeah.
I have to say, I'm not really in favor of widening the garages. The interior is now, one of them is nine feet, and the other one is eight feet, nine and a half inches, something like that. I think the constraining factor is the, is the door width. And that's what, that's what I think we should address. I don't think we need to move retaining walls. I think nine feet garage width is okay.
So if we can get the garage door to be nine feet wide?
The door and the design, and there probably are some design and structural issues about the, with respect to the pillars in the front of the building there that's, in, at the, the garage, that create the garage door opening. And I think that there probably is room there to get a garage door that's at least eight feet wide, maybe eight feet six, and that, without too much, without having to move a lot of dirt and rebuild retaining walls. I think that would work for me.
But then having the ability to be inside and open the door and get out comfortably.
That's enough, Chris. That's enough, Chris. You can do that.
Nine feet?
Yeah, for a, a parking space. What's, that's our parking space requirement. It's our size.
Yeah, but usually you have, well, right, and nobody uses them, that's the problem. But if you, if you have that nine feet in a parking lot, you have two nine-foot next together, so you're sharing that open.
And getting in and out of your car, I think.
Yeah, but your car swings into the other, you both have that two feet or a foot.
A single-car garage, I don't know. I think nine feet is okay for a single-car garage, so, I don't know.
I mean, it works, yes, but.
Can we, can we let the architect address it? I, I'm just, I'm curious to hear your, your reaction to this.
I think the, the retaining walls are the same width as the garage walls.
Right.
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 So.
We can widen the door for sure. We can, we can, the, widening the doors is, I don't think that's going to be a problem.
How wide do you think the doors could be widened within the existing building volume?
If the door is, if the garage is nine feet on the interior, then the door can be eight feet or maybe eight feet six. I mean, we need something to attach it to, you know?
Yeah, that's what I think.
The other, the other garage is eight foot nine, so. An eight-foot door will definitely fit.
Should we, would, would fellow commissioners be comfortable if we made a condition to require an eight-foot wide garage door? And they can figure the engineering around that of exactly how that happens and whether...
That's exactly what I'd written down.
If the wall needs to move, the wall needs to move, but if you can work within the bounds of what it is right now, then it can remain.
I would support that.
I'd be happy with an eight-foot door. The technical requirements are going to be the same for a big opening like that anyway.
Okay.
Build it a little bit with a better structural component across the top. Easy.
Okay. Now, before I, I start a motion then, there's one other issue that I don't know, I don't know how to move, how to make a motion. I think, I think we're good. I think we're, that's good for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And that has to do with the design of the front porches. So Ian and I are in favor of a redesign. We have, and options we would have here is we could continue it and come back and look at the redesign on consent calendar, or we could say, we could kind of delegate that to staff, and I would probably be comfortable with that. But, and I don't know if we even have votes to require a redesign of the, of the front porches. I think, Elizabeth, you kind of favor doing it, yeah?
I think it could be more elegant. I think it would be a step back from the street, a little bit of a, you know, just a visual step back that would help the project.
Yeah.
Bring it a little more in scale, the house next door, to the right in the front. I think some sort of awning over the door, doors versus the big flat strip of stucco at the top, I think would look much more elegant. And I'd be happy to delegate that to staff and the architect to design. I trust the architect's skills.
Okay, okay. Well, let me try then. Make a motion to approve Planning Application 1902-2, Design Review and a Parking Reduction on 1115 Nielsen Street, as proposed in the staff report and with the conditions included in the staff report, plus the additional following conditions. One, that the garage door opening should be widened to approximately, to eight feet if possible, and, or as wide as possible, approximately eight feet. That we provide, that the applicant provide covered and secure park parking for three parking, for three bicycles. That the front porches be redesigned and reviewed with staff to lighten their, their mass and, and perceived weight with possibly awnings and awnings over the, over the, over the windows, and railings around, railings on top, railings around the balconies and on top of the, on top of the garages. And finally, that the bedroom windows on the rear, on the rear elevation be, be respecified to show narrower windows, transom windows up higher on the wall to reduce the visual access from the, from, to and from the neighboring homes to the east. Okay?
I'll second.
Yeah, can we discuss? I'd like to discuss.
Yeah, please, yeah, please.
You know, I agree with everything except for the window reduction in the back, because I think this, these people living there have every right to look out at their backyard, just like the people across the street or behind them have the right to look out at their backyard. So I, I could support all those conditions except for reducing the windows in the back. I think they are, excuse me, it's not, it's not public.
Sir, this is not a comment.
I think that it's within the setbacks, they're following the legal requirements for the size of the addition in the back. And I think, like I said, they, they deserve light and air inside their rooms, just like anybody else on any other facade on the.
Okay.
The house.
Okay.
So I, I would, I would agree with everything except for the window requirement.
Well, I'm, yeah, I think you, I think you make a very good point. So, I don't know. Elizabeth, are you willing to?
I mean, I guess my perspect, and I, I hear you on that, and I don't, I don't disagree with that. I also just feel like it's a pretty minor give and a pretty, it's something that seems very of concern to the neighbors and not terribly detrimental to moving the project forward today. So that's kind of where I am, is, you know, I, I wouldn't say that we, we need that as a condition of approval to be able to defend this as exceptional design. To me, this is more of just a way of hearing the community and making a change that doesn't really adversely affect the project, and try to bring a little bit of harmony. Did the architect, do you have a comment on that part of the proposal? Okay, if you could come to the microphone.
I'm wondering if we could obscure the bottom portion of the windows, or we could replace the windows with like double hungs so that the bottom portion can be obscured, you can't look out, and you just look up.
Yeah.
I mean, you can still look out if you open your window, but, you know, most of the time, you wouldn't just be constantly looking out there unless you want to look in your backyard and talk to your child or something.
Sure, that sounds like a good compromise. If you can somehow reword that, Commissioner Donaldson.
I'll modify that motion then. Is that appro, am I right? Was it seconded or?
It was.
I'll modify it to delete the idea of transom windows in the back bedrooms and add in either double-hung windows with a obscure bottom or partially obscured, single-hung windows.
Well, or it could be any type of window with, let's say, the bottom half.
Yeah.
It could be awning windows or.
Obscured visibility at sort of eye level and below.
Half of the window.
Yeah, it's fine. Okay, okay.
I will resecond the amended motion.
Great. On that motion, I will, I will call individual roll call here. So Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Kent?
Aye.
Commissioner McCleod?
Aye.
And I will aye that motion as well, so that motion passes five to zero. The project for design review and a parking exception has been approved. Please do leave the story polls up for the duration of the 14-day appeal period, and this project has been approved. So with that, we will be moving on to the next agenda item, which is, just give it a minute to clear out the room for a second.
Before we move on to that next agenda item, just wanted to go back to the Sonoma project.
Oh.
How can we do that? We can do that?
I just want to acknowledge, so we, we have a speaker card, even though the project is approved. So for the benefit of the speaker, that was on the consent calendar. So it was approved at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if, want to take a comment?
Okay.
Sure, we can, we can take the one public comment on the Sonoma project, even though...
Okay. I'm not familiar with the protocol here, but two weeks ago, we received a notice of a public hearing concerning the expansion of the 1605 Sonoma property, and telling us that today is the day of hearing concerning that project. And it's great surprise to me, when I came up and talked a while ago, that you told me that the project had already been approved. So how can that be when I got a notice asking me to come and make a comment, and yet, no more necessary? I'm not trying to beat up on a dead horse, but I'm just curious how this thing operates.
So if, if we can share, so this item was the first item on the agenda?
Yeah.
So we heard it at about 7:05 this evening, and we asked if there was anyone here to speak on the item, on item 4-2, which is the 1605 Sonoma, who wished to pull it off the consent calendar.
I have, I have turned in a request to speak. Probably the first one.
The speaker card, I've gotten lumped in with the other speaker cards.
And also to talk about the way you guys speak in the beginning, not speaking into the microphone, makes it very difficult people, especially older people in the back to hear what you say. I hope you understand that.
Thanks.
Sure, thanks.
Thanks.
I, I need to be given the time to speak to this.
You have two minutes and 24 seconds remaining of your, your time.
Okay.
You can go, you can go ahead and speak right now of this project.
Speaking, we lived here for about 13 years now, and we live at a house to the east side of the subject property. And, and the neighbor, the Bryans, they moved in about a year ago, and now they propose to extend their second floor to the back. Now, my house, my, my, my wife and my daughter, we live in that house. Me and my wife live in the, in the front. My daughter live in the backside, which is two stories. Her bedroom is on the top floor, okay? Now, right now, our neighbor's house, 1607, does not have a second story right next to my daughter's side. And there's about eight feet distance between my daughter's, my house and my neighbors. And now, in my daughter's bedroom, there's only one window facing west, where she get her sunlight from the south, southwest and the west, okay? With the new extension of the neighbor's house, it will block off practically, I'd say about 70% of that window that she has. And so that would seriously limited her sunlight, and also, on a clear day, she had a clear view of Mount Tam, which I think we all enjoy. So the combined impact of the extension of the neighbor's house would cut off a great part of her sunlight, and also a good view, not to say, the loss of property, property value of our house. So I, I would really encourage the mission to look at this again and evaluate how this could impact the, the well-being of my, of my daughter's family. So, that's, that's my point, okay?
Thank you.
If I don't appear today, I will not have any legal standing on this issue. I just want to make that point. That's why I'm here.
Thank you.
So I think we, Chris and I can kind of speak to the, the scope of the project. It's already an existing two-story house. The applicant is proposing, Chris, feel free to chime in, they, I believe, are increasing the roofline in the back to accommodate an additional bedroom. And so you can see on the site plan, this is the only area of the home that's proposed to be affected by the project's scope.
Correct. And when the second-story addition was built in the past, it was also done with a conditional use permit, so this would kind of further align that wall with, that was already granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission in a previous hearing. And the second-story addition is approximately 221 square feet, so it's just adding a bedroom and relocating the lower bathroom up to the top, or, I mean, the top bathroom to a different location closer to the proposed bedroom.
I don't know. I think we have a procedural problem here. I don't know how to proceed. Because we, we, we didn't understand that he wanted to speak, and that would have called us, forced us to pull the item. And I don't know what you, can we rescind our decision?
And now the applicant isn't here.
The applicant was here, the applicant's gone now, so we can't rehear it now. I don't know what to do. I feel badly about it, yeah.
No. I think that the, sir, you should, you should know that you, you did show up tonight, and you said your piece, and there is a 14-day appeal period to the city council if you wish to, you see, to overturn the approval that, that we already made. But I don't think we're in a position to undo that approval right now.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, that's what I would suggest.
Have you had communication with the neighbor and their designer? Have you talked to them about this project? Have you talked to them about the project?
With the, with the architect.
In fact, we had pretty good tone with the neighbor, especially my daughter, because the neighbor is a music teacher to my grandchildren. And they have been in conversation with each other, and they haven't reached a conclusion yet. I think my daughter's, my proposal, my, my daughter proposal to them was to maybe cut back on the extension from 12 feet to 10 feet, or move that extension to the other side of the building, to the back. So that is where they are now, and, and my daughter had not asked me to come to talk, but I thought I might as well come just to put on record of our opposition to the proposal.
So I, I think at this point, our, our best advice would be there's a 14-day appeal period. You're welcome to file an appeal. We would very much recommend that you continue those conversations, or your daughter continue the conversations with the neighbor. But at this time, the project has now been approved from the Planning and Zoning Commission. But thank you for speaking.
Yep, yep, yep.
All right. With that, we are now turning to item number 6-2 on our agenda, the proposed zoning establishment for the parcel, the northwest corner of Cleveland and Washington.
Yes, I don't have a formal presentation for you, but I'll just provide you with an overview. The parcel at that subject location, at Cleveland and Washington, was a Caltransesment that was vacated. The city purchased that property in 2012 and worked on a plan for the property. So currently, the uphill portion of the property is the Peggy Thompson Pierce Street Park. The lower portion, at the present, is being used by a sewer contractor who's using it as a staging area. Previously, it was intended for development of the Public Works Building. That did not materialize. Public Works Building is on Cleveland Avenue elsewhere. So when we did the general plan update in 2016, this was assigned a general plan land use classification of R3, and the thinking was that it would continue with the existing land development that's already on Washington. So that was, that's contained in the general plan. The SEQA analysis that was done as part of the general plan EIR anticipated those uses. So from a SEQA perspective, what the zoning, the land use that was envisioned is consistent with the zoning recommendation that we have before you tonight, which is R3 for approximately 1.13 acres. And the public facilities, which allows park uses for that remaining portion, that's about three and a half acres. This is a little unusual in that there is not a development application before you tonight. This is simply establishing zoning for the parcel consistent with the general plan.
Is the line on the map, and approximately where the fence line is now?
Yeah, it, it effectively follows the fence line that, that exists presently.
Okay.
And it's not, sorry, you may have already said this, but it's not currently a separate legal parcel.
That's correct.
The city will process that at some other point.
Yeah, there, there is a tentative parcel map that would be processed at a future point in time. point in time.
Anyone have any questions or comments?
No questions, no other questions.
Need a, we do have three speaker cards, Omar and Maria Sabe, Robert Erhammer and Jeremiah. First speaker, if you could come on up.
Hi, I'm Omar Saba, and this is my wife Maria Saba. We have lived in Albany since 2011, and we moved into the house on Washington in 2015. We purchased it in 2015. We have several concerns regarding the proposed project for this space on Cleveland and Washington, and we're really against putting 60 low-income housing units across the street from us, which I'm a little concerned about, confused about, because we got a notice today in the mail from a low-income housing company that says that they're building 60 units. And you guys are saying that there is no, that there's nothing in place. So I'm a little concerned, confused if you could explain that afterwards. But let me just finish with this. So the, the really late notice of that document is really concerning to us, so we want some explanation on that, because it sounds like that's not clear. Parking, parking at Washington and Cleveland, we're a family of four. We have two cars. Our next-door neighbor is a family of two, they have two cars. 60 families on Cleveland and Washington is crazy to us. It just does not seem like 60 parking spaces for 60 families is realistic, and parking is already an issue there, and people are getting sideswiped all the time. So that's a real concern for us with 60 new families living there and the parking situation. The current use of it with the truck company, they have totaled one of our vehicles, and they had to pay out our vehicle for our father-in-law, who comes only in the mornings to take our kid to school. And he's there for about 25 minutes. And in 25 minutes, his car was totaled, and they had to cash out his vehicle, a BMW. So that's a real big concern for us, that they're going to put more cars there. And the current construction site, not only did they sideswipe and destroy my, my father-in-law's BMW, they also clipped cable lines to our house. And they didn't inform us, because they didn't even realize they did it. Our next-door neighbor saw it, and they, and she told us, and then we figured out what happened, and they fixed it. But it's just a big concern. That's a very small area, and there's always issues there. There's always concerns with parking and traffic. So 60 families in that location is a little bit crazy. The park, the park that's there is more like a rest stop. I don't know if you guys have been there, but it's very small. And the neighbors that have been there much longer than us, they all anticipated that entire space was going to be used for a park. And so we were really excited when we heard about it. We know it was like 13 years in the making, but that didn't happen. And it's such a small space, it really should be enlarged for the community. That's, in our opinion, a better use for that space and for the community. And then the tenants, who are the tenants? I read this document, and it says that it's open to very many people, low-income housing from $16,000 to $60,000 in income. That's Section 8 housing? That's mental health? I mean, what, what is that? Who are those people that are going to be living in our neighborhood near us? And, you know, I come from East, I come from East Oakland. I grew up in East Oakland, and I worked my ass off to buy this house. So I know about low-income housing, and I just want to make sure that we're putting the right people into our community, right? So that's a concern for me. Thank you.
Next speaker.
I'm Robert Erhammer. I live at 745 Pierce Street. As a way of background, the ongoing Pierce Street Park saga started in 1991, when Caltrans architects came here into this room and met with Mayor Peggy Thompson and several Pierce Street neighbors, including myself. From that time on, with all the trials and tribulations that went on with acquiring property, it basically took 20 years for the city to buy the property. And then it took another seven years to develop it as Pierce Street Park. In that time, it took like a quarter of a century, more than a quarter of a century to do the whole process. The acquisition of the park took $2.5 million. The building of the, of the property, the parcel, took $2.5 million, the, approximately. And the development of park took another million dollars. And when we originally started discussing this 20-odd years ago, the whole, the intent was the whole area would be a park, the whole four, almost four and a half acres. And in the meantime, a lot of things transpired, and the, the timeline, like I said, is 27 years. The, one of the things you'll find is that there's extreme need for open space in Albany. If you look at all the open areas that have a park or a place where kids can play, say north of Buchanan and west of San Pablo Avenue, that's about a quarter of the population of the city. And you only have Pierce Street Park that has a nice playground that's, you know, public accessible. It is used every day. We live right across the street from it, and we see children there all the time, and a lot of adults exercising and walking around, walking their dogs too, for that matter. And so I would say to you that open space is very much a premium. I look at the proposed idea for the public facility versus the R3 parcel that's on page five of the public facilities document that you have, and I see that there's a proposed property line across there that goes at an angle across north of Calhoun Street. I would suggest to you that a better placement for that property boundary is in parallel to the south edge of Calhoun Street. And the reason for that is that it maximizes the public facility area, but it also makes it possible in the future that people could come in and park in that area to the north of Calhoun Street for access to the park.
Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
Jeremiah.
So my name is Jeremiah. I speak on this. I think it'd be great to have housing there. It's already in the works. Albany needs to do something with low-income housing. And I don't think anybody from the public has a right to, you know, say that people here or, you know, voters should get to decide who gets to live in Albany and who doesn't get to live in Albany. I don't know who gets to judge that. If these people have enough money and, and work hard enough, these people that are going to live in this 60-unit building, if they want to work hard enough and they're able to afford to live there, they should have that right. It shouldn't be anybody else's right to prejudge who gets to live there and who not gets to live there. And it's not like those people are any better or worse humans than anybody else living around that neighborhood. So low-income housing, still in today's standards, is high income. I mean, it's not like we're going to be able to rent these units for $500 a month. They're still going to cost $2,000, $2,500 a month, and you got to work, you got to have a $40-an-hour job just to afford that. So, yeah, you can't decide who gets to live in Albany and who doesn't get to Albany, live in Albany, based on neighborhood, people and their opinions. Even though voters do have a right for their opinions to be heard, I mean, they voted for everybody up here to be on the commission, and they do have every right to be heard. We are the voters. You know, public park is a great idea for open spaces. I'm with that too, but it's an old Caltrans site. And the fact that there's never been an ecological study done because of this hepa-hepa, I don't know what it's called, but there could be asbestos there, there could be lead there. And you want your kids playing around on lead and asbestos? There could be circular saw blades in the ground. Someone's going to cut themselves, okay? There's no ecological study done there? Wonder why? It's an old construction site. I, I've done work myself. I ran, I ran water trucks before and for bulldozers, and they come around and grease the joints on the bulldozers with this blue grease gun. And I'll tell you what, that blue grease gun goes right in the dirt, and they bulldoze right over it. If you dig up every construction site, you will find blue grease containers, empty containers, guarantee it. So you want to plant a tree on that? It's just going to die. Plant housing. Albany needs housing. Everybody needs housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any more speakers on this item?
No.
Great. Seeing none, public comment is closed.
I just want to clarify Mr. Sabe's comments, just to kind of add some additional context. So the action before you tonight is for the zoning establishment on the property. There isn't a development application right now. The letter that you received is from a housing developer that's based in Berkeley that currently is in an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city for future development of that site. But right now, in terms of having an actual site plan that, that shows, you know, the level of detail that we typically see, that's still in the concept phase. And I definitely encourage you to reach out to them. I mean, that, the reason they sent those letters was they want to start engagement with the neighborhood to understand what the concerns are going to be with regard to the project and, and future review.
Great. Thanks for that clarification, commissioners. No, I'm, I'm sorry, the public comment portion of the, this item is closed.
Let's see. And is there any background you can give us on how the line was selected there? And, you know, how the line was placed there? Is that because of the, that generally was in the general plan? Or were there some staff discussions about how big a site was needed for?
Consistent with, with the general plan, but also what we understand from SAHA is that they're going to need at least an acre to make a project work on that, on the site.
Okay.
But this is three and a half acres.
No.
Right. The resultant parcel where the park is would also be zoned as part of your action this evening.
It would be zoned public facility.
Public facilities, that's correct.
Public facilities, so, ah, okay.
Okay, got it.
It's effectively taking what's currently all public facilities and parsing out a portion for high-density residential.
Actually, neither part, neither site has a zoning classification right now. They just have general plan land use designations.
There's no zoning. There's, no, it's, well, it used to be part of the highway, so it's, on the zoning map, it's just blank, I guess, huh? Just white space, yeah, yeah, yeah. It used to be I-80, so, yeah.
This is?
Go ahead.
I was just saying, I mean, I know Albany's really struggling to find places to put affordable housing, and this is an easy shot, because it's open, clear and all this. But, you know, there does come with some real constraints. And we know Washington's super narrow, especially after you pass Pierce Street. It's, I think it's 20 or even 19.5 feet wide. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, right.
And it's putting all those people, low-income, right there under the freeway, just seems, doesn't seem quite right. You know, it seems weird that that's all, that's all Albany can do is find this awkward little spot. But, you know, not to dismiss it, it's not so bad down there as it, you know, it's actually, you're below it, so you don't get all the noise. You're kind of on top of Washington, so I know what the noise is like. So, you know, that's what I'm wrestling with. I mean, I can see the logic behind it. It's really, it's an easy spot, it's easy to zone, and we have, and SAHA is interesting, that's all great. But these people have to walk to shopping. Where's the transit? I guess on Pierce Street, we have a bus stop, right? There is East Pacific Mall that's fairly walkable. That's all the logic that's being thought through, right?
I, I just had one more question about the geometry. I understand sort of the, the square footage size that was selected. Why was the geometry of the line selected in that orientation?
Part of it has to do with the topography, because the, the site does have some pretty significant geographical challenges.
So it kind of is hugging the topography along where that line is.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that, so that's sort of a one acre, it's relatively leveled in?
Oh, no.
No.
There's going to be a fair amount of reinforcement.
It drops down, yeah. It drops down quite a bit from Calhoun, from the end of Calhoun, it drops down quite a bit. Yeah, okay.
Though it's not in the, you know, realm of the commission for your discussion tonight, I can tell you SAHA is tentatively penciled in 60 off-street parking spaces for the occupants. So concerns related to parking, you know, you should be aware that they will be providing onsite parking, and it will actually be subterranean.
Right, right. I would assume, I would assume so.
Just two quick-ish questions. One is, and I think you already touched on this, but is, what's the adjacent zoning on Washington's, on Washington Ave?
It's R3.
It's R3, okay. So this would be just an extension of the same zoning district. And my other question was something brilliant that totally escaped me.
Yeah. One thing I just want to add, and again, it's not really for the commission to discuss tonight, but I do want to, for your benefit and for members of the public who've taken time out of their evening, SAHA will be proceeding with a community engagement process. So they will be having public workshops soliciting input. This is, you know, at this point, it is still very much a work in progress.
I thought of my question, which is, could you just give a little, just a brief update on where Albany is at in terms of complying with our RENA compliance? Sorry, I'm really hungry, so.
Yeah, of course.
But, but, sorry, just for the benefit of members of the public, every community in California is under obligation to plan for a wide variety of housing affordability levels. And we have certain standards that we're supposed to meet in terms of providing housing that's affordable to above moderate-income households, moderate, low-income households, very-low-income households. So my question is really just trying to understand better how this potential development fits in with that overall.
Right. So this, this project would be 100% affordable, so it would go a long ways to helping the city achieve its RENA goals. Right now, we are deficient in the unit generation for low-income and very-low income, and this would help to alleviate that.
Okay, thanks. And so, again, even though there's no project before us this evening, I just wanted to understand the, the bigger context. Thanks.
So it's basically a precursor to moving forward with the other negotiations and development.
It's, it's a precursor really to any development on this property. Candidly, we probably should have had a zoning classification prior to building the park. But, you know, it, because it was a redevelopment deal, it just proceeded in a different path. So this, my perspective on this, it's actually more of just a perfunctory exercise of getting the zoning consistent with land use that's already been in place for three years.
I appreciate the comments about open space. I think Albany is kind of lacking in park space, but there are significant reasons we should be doing housing. The state is really impacted. And low-income housing these days, it's, it's average people. I mean, it's schoolteachers, it's, I don't know, it's, it's, it's part of making our community more affordable.
And this is managed, right? This is the managed?
Yes.
Yeah, so these are?
I think it's an important goal. And I do understand the trade-off with the park, but, you know, if we have an opportunity to add housing, I think we should do it.
I have, I think I have a question about the park. I'm not familiar about, is there a master plan for that park? And, I mean, what's been built so far is sort of a, a children's play area. And then there's sort of a red fence that, right now, our temporary fence, anyway, this is, you know, don't go here. What's proposed for that area and?
I know right now, the Public Works Department is looking at doing like some hydro seeding and other landscape improvements to the property.
Okay.
When this was approved several years ago, it was conceived as kind of a multi-phase project, but it all revolved around the development of the park. And I think, you know, the bulk of the work has, has obviously concluded there is a park there now. And so now it's, you know, the second phase of doing landscaping improvements.
So it's a multi-phase project, and, and the subsequent phases aren't necessarily all planned or designed or approved?
Definitely not designed or approved.
Not designed or approved, okay. And was the intent that the entire thing would be a park? Or was it, it wasn't, wasn't the intent that part of that was going to be the Public Works Department?
Yeah, the portion that's?
The part that has the trucks on it now?
Yeah, that was envisioned for the Public Works Maintenance Facility, but that, that didn't materialize.
Instead, we got the site, the other site? Yeah, okay.
I have a question on the? I did a question on the, on the R3 high-density residential zoning classification for this. And, you know, in part for the public's knowledge here as well, that obviously, the act before us tonight to effectively zone this parcel, R3, does not mean inherently that this is going to be an affordable housing development on this parcel.
Right.
So what it does mean is that this allows for a certain number of units per the size of that parcel. That's, that is in the purest of senses what tonight's action is, is saying, instead of this being a single-family home, or a two-unit home, or a park, or a school...
A Public Works Maintenance Building.
Or a Public Works Maintenance. This is allowing a density of up to a certain amount of density.
Correct.
And what is the maximum density that would be allowed?
63 units per acre.
And this is one, how many?
Right now, it's tentatively about 60 units.
Okay. So, so again, I think just for the public's knowledge, those units could be market rate, they could be below market rate, they could be very below market rate per our decision tonight. It's not, it's not locking the city into any particular project right now. It's just putting that, that there's going to be a high-density housing development allowed on this site in the future in some shape or form.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, just hypothetically speaking, you know, we are in negotiations with SAHA. We do not have a finalized agreement. We do not have a DDA in place. If that were to fall, fall through, for whatever reason, we're still then left with a 1.1 acre site that could be developed for housing by another developer.
And not that I want to, you know, say that we shouldn't be doing a certain thing, but I think it's just important for the public to know that the act tonight is not, has nothing to do with defining a proposal, per se, or locking the city into any obligation. There'll be plenty of public process around whatever the proposal ultimately is.
So, yeah, I think it's an appropriate extension of the adjacent zoning district and an appropriate extension of the land use planning that the city has already done under its general plan. And this is, I do see this as a bit of a formality. Because, you know, frankly, even if we, sitting here tonight, wanted it to be single-family zoning, that's not what the general plan calls for. And so our discretion to try to zone it something else would be limited. So I am comfortable voting to move this forward.
And just, in terms of procedure, so we have two resolutions for you. We, the first resolution is related to findings for SEQA. And so we worked with our external SEQA legal counsel. And we have Exhibit A, which provides a set of findings based on the EIR. And then we have an addendum with a brief analysis. So that's to cover the basis of SEQA review. And then the second resolution, Resolution 2019-06, is the commission forwarding a formal recommendation to City Council to establish zoning classifications consistent with the general plan.
Well, I would, unless there's other discussion to be had, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-05, Making SEQA Findings, and 2019-06, Forwarding a Recommendation to the City Council to Adopt Zoning Classifications.
I'll second.
Great. Can we take a roll call vote? All in, all in favor or?
Aye.
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 Any in opposition? Seeing none? That item, those two resolutions have passed. So Item 6-2 has been approved with a forwarding a recommendation to the City Council to establish that zoning classification. Thank you all. That takes us on to Item 7 on our agenda, which is new business, which we have none of, it looks like, on the agenda?
Target?
Says old.
Eight, sorry.
Oh, old business, okay.
So with that, we'll move on to Item 8.
Yeah.
Old Business, 8-1, A Study Session for Design Review of the New Sign for Target at 1057.
I had a public comment on new business. I turned in a speaker card.
I have a, Jeremiah did turn in a speaker card.
Okay.
I said I'd stick around about an hour ago.
Okay.
I want to have a, it's for public comment, though, I think. So it's up to the discretion if the commission...
Public comment on new business?
Yeah, it'd be worth it. It's just really quick. It's a positive suggestion. Over in the Albany Plaza, the New Albany Plaza, I propose an immediate review for a stop sign. I don't know what it's zoned as. But on the intersection of Monroe and 10th, it's where Banfield Pet Hospital is, it's kind of the corner. There's buses parked there, and there's no stop sign going east or west. There's a stop sign coming out of the Sprouts Parking Lot, and a stop sign coming out of the road behind the Old Folks Home and the baseball field. Stop signs coming north and south. There's no stop signs going east or west. And heading east from the stop sign way in the Village, before the bus zone, there is quite a little runway. It's about 500 feet. And by the time they get to Banfield Pet Hospital, that intersection, where people are backing out of Starbucks, these cars are already going 30 miles an hour. And I just would hate to see another death in Albany at an intersection, you know? So just, just immediate review, just some focus on that intersection. East and west, probably use a stop sign. I don't know what it's zoned as. But it really needs it. I don't know if you can check it out.
Stop signs are a Traffic and Safety Commission issue, not a zoning question.
Just for clarity purposes, that land, that right-of-way is actually not in the jurisdiction of the city. It's the jurisdiction of University of California.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great. With that, we're on to Item 8. Item 8-1, The Study Session for the Pylon Sign at Target.
Yes, so we're, I'll be fairly brief in my remarks tonight. But this is coming back to you. You looked at this a couple months ago as a study session item. It's the Target sign request for a 50-foot-tall pylon sign at 1057 East Shore. I won't revisit all of the more recent history, but just kind of refresh your memory with the context. So this is the existing sign that's quite a bit shorter, that currently exists onsite today. In their previous request, Target has identified the need for increased visibility within the I-80 corridor as a basis for their request. So when the commission looked at this on February 13th, you asked that some additional visuals be provided, in particular, some renderings to give some better context for how the sign would integrate into the corridor. So with this package before you tonight, the applicant has not only provided the photo simulations, but they've also modified the sign design. So this is what you looked at before, just for context. Currently, you have a bullseye with the Target logo. So this previous request proposed to carry that forward. The current request has eliminated the Target text. It's decreased the sign size and simply put up the bullseye, but it still remains the same height at 50 feet. And then here's a rendering of what the sign would look like on East Shore. And there again, if you're heading eastbound on 80, you would have some visibility of the sign in front of the liquid lumberdators. So this is the definitions for freestanding sign in shopping center, just to refresh your memory. The property is located in the CMX, and so your discretion is wide and vast. There really is no guiding criteria within the sign ordinance. You have complete discretion to evaluate this as you see appropriate. The Target, the logo and cabinet area remains the same at 150 square feet of signage. And again, you have the discretion on this. So just to, you know, our general concern was that this would set a precedent of one of the largest and tallest signs in Albany. For comparison, Golden Gate Fields is approximately 65 feet in height. So with those circumstances, we've brought this back to you for, for an additional review with that information that you requested. We have not received correspondence on this. The project is categorically exempt pursuant to a Section 15303 of SEQA. And with that, we're asking you to provide feedback to the applicant and staff tonight. And I think, just in the interest of moving this application forward, it would be helpful to provide just kind of a general indication. If you feel you have enough information with the submittal that you could take action at a future meeting, but also, you know, ideally determine if we have support for the request based on what was reviewed last time. The commission was not in favor of this sign request. So I think the applicant was hoping with these modifications, this might be more acceptable to the commission for potential approval. And with that, we also have a PDF of, of... We had a, I have a rendering to show you, but I'll turn this over to the applicant so that they can present some, present their application to you. And so this, this was the additional exhibit. It just shows the previous and the currently proposed.
Well, I think we made you all aware of the reasons we want the sign in the last meeting. So let's talk about what the changes are. Basically, we've reduced the background to a minimalist, just the logo of the Target, which is more than enough for identification for our purposes, and then two spaces for the future tenants. Most likely the Toyota dealer and the future tenant for our upcoming new parcel. We looked at different height elevations and felt that the 50 feet was as low as we could go because of the buildings directly to the southwest, whichever direction you consider the freeway, that would block anything much lower than this. And I think you can see that on our, the elevation simulation. And what, what we really felt we did is, is take the sign to the minimalist point where we could get the message across and still be acceptable to you guys. And with that, I think we'd just like to answer some questions.
Thank you. Well, maybe before, are there any questions of the applicant?
It's still hard for me to visualize on this. So in comparison, you said the Golden Gate Field is 65 feet tall, and the East Pacific Mall, do you know how tall that one is?
Was the sheet we gave you guys with?
There were some comparisons.
Various signs?
It just doesn't, it doesn't have the Ranch 91.
Ranch 91, yeah, right. That one looks like 100.
96, Union City?
So this exhibit provided by the applicant is intended to give you some context on other similar signage.
Okay. I was thinking about something more local.
Freeway, that's a sample of freeway signage there.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I don't have any questions right now. I don't think so.
Good with that.
Well, stay fly, stay close.
Do we have any public comment?
We do have a public speaker, Jeremiah.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Jeremiah. And we all know the reasons for this sign. It's money. There's two tenant spots. They could charge tenant, two tenants, money to put their name right there. So they can make money. If there's an earthquake, if it's not built right, it could fall down, could fall on the freeway, block traffic. You know, I noticed there's a driveway that goes right through the middle of that lot. Actually, I checked out that lot in the parcel map probably a couple years ago. Interesting piece. I had some visions of it about a year ago when I first noticed it. The driveway. I pictured a little, small drive-through café. That driveway right there. Starbucks, something in the morning, little coffee shop, a business. It raised revenue for the city, a business, and create jobs. How many jobs is a sign going to create? It's just another distraction from the freeway. You got cars wanting a rubberneck to look at a Target sign. Well, bullseye, oh, accident. Might as well put a Target on the car in front of you, because that's what you're going to hit. And it's funny, because the two-tenant spot, it says 5 feet. It's kind of over-exaggerating, because each, if you divide that by 2, it's 2.5 feet. This page right here is almost 2 and 1/2 feet. So you think you could see this 50 feet high from a freeway driving at 70 miles an hour? Something this big going 10 feet this way? You got to have some serious 2020 vision or some good spectacles. I think it's a waste of money. I think it's a waste of space in Albany. Albany could put a business right there. So I don't think this is a good idea at all. I really don't. And, you know, I'm a voter, and I think voters' opinions should be heard. I'm a voter in the City of Albany. I know I voted for people on this commission. People from companies, they, they may or may not be citizens of Albany. They may or not care, value what the people of Albany think. Not everybody from Albany gets to come to these city council meetings, I'm sorry, these public meetings at 9 o'clock at night. You got work the next day, and you got dinner to eat at home. It's kind of like that movie, Dukes of Hazzard, where they did the bait and switch, where he's at this town hall, and they're doing the race, and everybody's watching the race, while Target's over here doing this. Everybody's at home with their kids, planning for tomorrow. But I was here to make my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll close public comment. Turn it back to the commission.
I wasn't here during the last presentation, but I did see this stuff, so. Actually, I think it's a lot. It's a big improvement. And I do think there's a lot to be said for having people that drive down the freeway know where Target is. They're trying to find it. Other, other Targets up and down, other businesses up and down the freeway have signs that advertise them. They know where to get. It is kind of hidden. So I think we'd like to have a sign that allows, you know, enough so people can see it from the freeway. Not so much where we're adding to the visual, we are adding to the visual blight, but, you know, not, not raising the bar on the visual blight. So I'm okay with it. You know, I don't like signs overall, but, you know, I know their reality for business is the same business, so I think we have to accept it to that point. So I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I also think it's an improvement over the prior iteration. It's, it's simpler. And I still, I'm not crazy about the height, but I do, I appreciate you providing the photo sims to put it in context and show, you know, the height you actually need to be able to see that sign from the northbound approach. So, yeah, again, I'm not crazy about the height, but I understand why, why you're asking for it. And I, I think I can support it as well.
I support Megan's comments. I feel the same way.
Yeah, I really appreciate your redesign. And I generally like minimalism. And it looks a little more elegant, quite obvious.
I agree. I like the minimalist. I, I agree.
And, you know, absolutely, people only need the logo. And I don't really have any other, I think it's appropriate for the size of the development it's representing. And I think it's appropriate as a freeway sign. I too, I'm not thrilled by things, visual things like that, but that's my personal opinion. But I would like to support the continued success of Target in our community. I think it's a great employer and part of our tax base, and I think it should be supported. So I thank you for your efforts redesigning it. Just one question, the, the white sign would be backlit? Would the, and these would, the Target sign would also be lit from inside? Is that true?
Yes, the Target, a little bit of white would light up, and then we may have a red edge to it, but the tower brick would not light up. It's just a little bit of white. And then we just were paid to put a red edge around the perimeter and square. And then the others are really placeholders, so it colors. That may be a darker background with color, but just not certain yet. But it won't just be a white rectangle. It'll be, it'll be graphic there.
It'll represent whatever business you're representing.
It's just a placeholder type of face, whatever.
And just out of curiosity, how are you going to make it stand up? Is it cantilever or a big, massive?
That's what structural engineers do.
Okay, you don't do that. Okay, well, just curious. That's all I can say. But going forward, I could support this.
And I'll just wrap up by echoing those comments. You know, the 50 feet still feels a little high for me, but I do very much appreciate particularly, again, that northbound photo sim. You know, I feel from the southbound photo, it's, it feels tall. But when I see the northbound and that it really is that height is what is needed to peek up over the lumber liquidator roofline, that's a very, to me, pragmatic height and reasonable to, you know, to be able to see it at that distance. So that sort of, to me... So that sort of, to me, pulls the story and justification for the height together, even if a closer view still feels really tall. So, you know, with that, I would, I would be comfortable with this proposal. We don't have a, right, this was a study session.
I think what we would do, and depending on the applicant's availability, we could even schedule this for the consent calendar at the next meeting, two weeks from today.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, it's interesting, there's been no public comment. I mean, I have no idea what Albany citizens would have to say. If it's on the calendar, then there'll be an opportunity for public comment.
Well, no, we send out postcards for this, so anybody in that general vicinity would have received a postcard identifying.
I mean, nobody really lives there.
No, it goes mostly to the adjacent business property owners.
Right, okay.
I'll make, I guess I could make one other little comment. My thinking, looking at the photo simulations and all that, and the design, I was wondering about the width of the supporting post. And I thought about commenting on that and saying, well, it's not quite right. Maybe it could be a little bit narrower. And then I thought, I thought maybe not. It's sort of an aesthetic kind of question and how the weight of the top is balanced with the supporting pole and the dimensions and, you know, is it half, is it 2/3, is it 1/3? If it's closer to 1, maybe closer to 1/3 of the width of the signboard would be a little bit more aesthetic appealing, but I don't feel strongly about it. And actually, especially when you're coming from the, when you're heading east on the freeway, it, the proportions look good to me. So, I don't know, it's something that you could play with, and if you come back with a little narrower pole, a little narrower support stanchion, I'd be happy with it. I suggest you play with it and take a look at some designs and see if it's a little better balanced, if it's, say, a third, a third of the width of the signboard or something like that. I'm not sure what it is now, but more like 40 or 45%.
Do you want to see it more narrow?
Yeah, a little bit more narrow, but it shouldn't look like, you know, something perched on top of a pole. It shouldn't look like that. It needs some mass to it. I'm not sure, I'm just not sure quite what proportion.
Yeah, you got a point. At the same time, you don't want it to look unstable somehow.
You do not, no.
Spindly.
That's right.
Kind of proportionate to its size at the top, but I don't want it to look like a flag either.
No, you don't, no, no. It's probably right, it's probably just about right. But I suggest, they are going to be coming back, and I think, as designers, I think you should, sign designers, I think you should take a look at it. My comment.
The only other question would be the width when you're looking at it on edge, and that could be shrunk a little bit, I don't.
Yeah, yeah.
Overall, it seems like you're on very much the right track.
I think it's a big improvement.
Yeah, I'm looking at the Ranch 99 sign, it's so humongous out of proportion with the.
Which one?
Ranch 99.
Oh, yeah.
It almost makes me, now I recall not wanting to shop there because it was such an imposition on the neighborhood. And this isn't, it's, you know, it's.
And just FYI on that Ranch 99 sign, we don't look to that as a model of anything. It violates Richmond zoning code.
Yeah, I know, and they imposed it on our neighborhood. That's what really anchors me.
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, I think, did a major disservice for.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't see it luckily, but.
Yeah.
Well, I have one other comment, it's about precedent. I mean, anything that comes to us in the future, we have 100% discretion on what happens. It's not obligating us to prove something else, so.
And spoiler alert, you're going to be looking at the sign ordinance at your next meeting.
Oh.
Timely. Any other comments?
No.
All right, we'll close that item, move on to Item 9 on our agenda, announcements, discussion, anything from staff? Great, with that, our next meeting is Wednesday, the 24th at 7:00. With that, we're adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you.
10 o'clock.